The hour is six o'clock. I want to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Members present for this evening, Judy Froman, Peter Meyer, George Sledge, Mary J., Marcelangelo, and Jared may be late. I haven't heard from him yet. And just for the record, at the last month we meet in Selectman Froman and Selectman McDonald did call in advance of the meeting and say that they would not be there.
Thanks.
So I just want to get that for the record. Note, this do this mean, this means being televised, streamed, and recorded live on TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge at this time. Seeing none, all items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation votes by the Board of Selectmen. And a moment of silence for our troops and our public safety personnel. Also, two members of the community passed away over the last week who were very active here. Nelson Brace, who did a lot with Little League and different boards in town, and Marjorie McCoon, who was very active in the COA. So please keep them in your thoughts. And to my rights, the flag, towards the reasons?
To the flag of United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
Judy, would you like to lead the vision, please?
Certainly. Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers it to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
MJ, could you lead the mission, please?
Oh, sure. Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Is there any public comment that anybody's aware of? Seeing none. Next thing on the agenda, it's a joint meeting with the Board of Health. Discussion on possible vote to fill the Board of Health vacancy. Chairman, I stand me Andrews. Would you like to call your Board of Order?
Yes, at this time I'd like to, like, two so four, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Health jointly with the Board of Selectmen to order. Present is Dusty Meyer, Skip Farlow, and Stanley Andrews.
Thank you. You can go into the history of why we're here.
Okay, we had a resignation of a member from the Board, one longstanding member. She notified myself, the Board, and Town Clerk's Office. We then, by statute, notified the Board of Selectmen of the vacancy so that we could jointly appoint a person to serve out the term till the next town election.
Thank you. And as part of that process, George, you only received one letter?
Correct.
And that letter came from Barbara Princicata, who did serve in that capacity before. So she's interested in coming back for a second time. So with that in mind, please come up to the podium, introduce yourself.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Barbara Princiata. I live in Buzzards Bay, and as everybody knows, I'm committed to serving. So I'm here to, I guess, ask that I be reappointed or appointed. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Does anybody here from the Board of Selectmen have any questions?
I do.
You do?
No.
You don't? Okay.
Any questions from Board of Health?
No.
From the public? Seeing none. All right then, is there a nomination?
I make a motion that we appoint Barbara Princiata to the Board of Health till the next election.
Second.
Second. All right, then, with the motion being seconded for Barbara Princicata to serve to the next town election, we'll do a roll call vote. Judy?
Yes.
Peter, yes? George?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Dusty?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Is unanimous? Is there a motion to adjourn the joint meeting and saying the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen?
So we'll remove, we adjourn the Board of Health.
Second. Have a motion second to adjourn the Board of Health. All those in favor?
Aye.
You unanimous? Thank you very much. Wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Barbara, we'll meet next Wednesday.
Sounds good.
And Selectman McDonald. Next thing on the agenda will be the minutes of 4:14, 6:01, and 6:09. I'm going to hold off on the 6:15 minutes for approval unless the Board has any other ideas. We'll start with the 4:14 minutes first. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 14. I do have one edit, though.
Yep, go ahead.
The only edit that I have is that on, it references Bill August. There's a T at the end of his last name.
Okay.
Minor thing, but might be a different person.
Okay. Any other edits or changes for those minutes? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve with that one edit?
Motion. Motion to approve the minutes of April 14 with minor edit.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And discussion in the for the minutes of 4:14, 2021. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Minutes of June 1, 2021. Is there a motion?
Do you know what? I just messed that up. That was that June 1 has the Bill August name in it.
No, that's fine. We'll fix it.
Somebody will find it.
All right. So the August 1, is there a motion to approve the August 1, 2021 minutes with that one correction?
Would it be June 1?
June 1.
June 1.
Yeah, June 1.
Seconded?
I think there's a typo in that, too. One small typo, which I'll say, I think it's like site. It's supposed to be S.I.T.E.
Okay.
I'll send that over. Sorry.
So other than the two corrections, one that MJ suggested and one that Judy suggested, are there any other corrections? Or, okay, there has been a motion seconded, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 9, 2021?
There is a motion to approve the minutes of June 9, 2021.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. The minutes of June 15, I'm going to hold off because there have been some comments. I know I found some. MJ has found some. So I just want to, you know, see if we can table those minutes. Because what, the way that, these are the first sets of minutes that were done by the new secretary. So I just want to make sure that, you know, they're done. The way they, you know, you know. So we'll just sit with her and put the staff and show, and show them. Everything will be good. All right, so now we're...
Excuse me, could I make a suggestion that the Board and any, you know, administrator, assistant administrator have any suggestions to resume protocol? Because this is a, there's a turnover that just took place, and this may be an opportunity to make it better.
Yeah, no problem.
Be nice to, for us to let the new secretary know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd be willing to be that conduit.
Well, you're the clerk, so thank you.
There you go.
So, the next thing on the agenda, we cannot go before 6:30. That's a liquor hearing. That's by statute. So the next thing on the agenda we'll start with is discussion on possible vote, Cape Cod Canal Day Festival, request for one day liquor license for September 18, 2021. Is anybody here for that?
Marie was supposed to be here.
Yeah, she was contacted.
Unless she, she thinks it's seven and not six.
Yeah, just... Could be.
Probably stuck in rush hour.
It kind of went really fast, so...
And item, well, we can hold off and come back on that. What is, it is pretty cut and dried. What's the...
It is.
What's the Board's project? Just want to go through with them?
I don't, I don't see that she needs to be here for that.
Yeah.
This is a reoccurring.
So who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Cape Cod Canal Day Festival request for a one day liquor license for September 18, 2021. Be approved.
Second.
And discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Discussion on possible vote, request of Vincent McKenzie to remove and replant 13 trees at Buzzards Bay Park and install a four inch, or four foot wide asphalt sidewalk to connect the patio of Mix Main Scoop, 100 Main Street Buzzards Bay to the existing asphalt walkway. I don't see Zachary Bracken or Vinnie or anybody there.
See if he's down there.
Okay. In your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Robert DeWar, here for Bracken Engineering on behalf of Vincent McKenzie.
Okay, I apologize. I'm usually used to seeing Zach or Dawn.
That's all right. Zach decided to take a vacation this week, so...
What? Well, welcome.
Sure. On behalf of Vincent McKenzie, he is proposing, in conjunction, I believe, with the Town DPW to construct a four foot wide walkway from the back entrance to the patio at Mix Main, the ice cream store that is now occupying the old crew tie building on Main Street. That pathway would go from his patio to the existing asphalt pathway within Buzzards Bay.
Sure.
Within the Buzzards Bay Park. As Peter said, it's a four foot wide path. It's about 15 feet long. In conjunction, there's a row of, I believe some of them are arborvitae's and some of them are cedar trees, small cedar bushes. They would be removed. I don't believe at this point there's any plan to replant them, as stated on the, on the agenda. I think that they're trying to remove them just to open up views to like the playground area, you know, from the patio.
I understand. It's just that...
No, I'm not sure where that came from. The expectation is they'll be replanted. Those trees are only a few years old.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that certainly can be the case. You know, in terms of conflicts with the path, we're only looking at two trees, three maximum, just to provide for, you know, the location of the path. If they need to be replanted on the other side, that's...
Yeah, so we've been, we've been looking at that recently, just to figure out where to put 13 trees. It turns out that only probably three or four really need to be removed to put the path in, and it's probably not the best time of year to be doing that, to make sure we have the best opportunity for success to, you know, to replant those at a location picked by the town. So we, you know, looked at some areas that we could put, you know, three or four trees to be able to get the path in. But I think removing all of them at this point, you know, this time of year could be, you know, a challenge in terms of making sure that they survive, so...
Well, what we can do is approve, removing the minimum that we need to do to get the path done and the rest, if he wants to come back and remove the other one. He can come back another time if he wants to remove the rest of them. You know, but always get the, always get the path in there. I think that will be beneficial for everybody involved.
Certainly, a minimal.
So, any discussion from the Board?
Well, I'm a bit of a tree hugger, and, but it is not the right time to replant, you know, trees. I think that one of the things that is good about this is that it does kind of open up the visibility of the park, which, you know, we want to encourage people to be there. So I don't know, sometimes trees can go in other places, but I, good luck if we save these. But we can try. We can definitely try.
They're not so large that they can't be replanted, so...
I mean, I know with the way the, the business is designed now that you rather take all the trees down so you can look out towards the water. Because before, those trees were put up to hide a blighted old building.
Exactly.
Now you have a brand stair, you have a building over there. Something you don't want to be blocking, so...
I mean, if we want to just go forward and, you know, just like you said, approve the removal of the few, two or three trees needed for the path now and then come back at a later date for the removal of the others.
Yeah, Vinnie can always, you know, come back before the Board at some point.
Certainly.
But, I mean, that's the way I would think, is just do the two or three trees that are needed right now. You know, just to open up the... So, but what's the pleasure of the Board? Is there a motion that someone would like to make?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So is fall the time to be replanting?
Yeah, early April.
Yeah, early, yeah. And, and there is some work that's going to be done around landscaping around the field by the police station where they're redoing, and there might be some use for some of those trees in the, some of those trees in the fall. And I do know, having sat on that, on the outside seating at Mix, if you were a parent and you wanted to have, you know, be able to see your children on the playground, it would be better not to have a blocking of arborvitae, so... I think it's good to have that discussion, for all possible use in, in the fall.
Yeah, definitely.
Certainly.
I could make a motion to allow Vincent McKenzie to remove up to four, up, yeah, up to four arborvitae's and something else, cedar, and construct a four foot sidewalk from the patio of Mix Main Scoop at 100 Main Street to the existing sidewalk within Buzzards Bay Park, as shown on the attached plan titled Proposed Walkway Plan in Bourne, Mass. And dated April 2, 2021. The applicant shall utilize a certified tree company approved by the town. This is if we, we are mandating that they replant them, okay? The applicant shall utilize a certified tree company approved by the town experienced in excavation, removal, and proper replanting of these types of trees. The applicant shall fill and regrade the excavated area, any disturbed area, and install sod in the same.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I do have a question. Excuse me. Were the trees put in there because the planning board wanted them? Are we undoing something that they requested? Sorry, that just dawned on me.
I believe they were paid for with CBA money.
Yeah. It was designed by the engineer for Western and Sampson when they designed the park.
Oh, that's right.
It was just, but no one, you know, but we said, no, no problem with any, you know, putting trees in, obviously. But, but if they, if they hire, if they follow the professionals' recommendation and stuff, I'm sure things will work out.
Yeah. Mr. Jerry, the reason for the trees as a shield no longer exist, but maybe, I don't know if there's a staff among, on our Bourne staff that may have ideas. Somebody suggested the, something near the police station. There may be even a better area. But it would be nice to hear those suggestions rather than sitting there scratching our heads three months from now.
Yeah.
What to do. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All set? Is unanimous? Thank you.
Very much.
Let's see. Marie, we, you were, you were on before, and we already approved it. Yep.
Yep.
You're done.
But I wanted to make a presentation. Okay.
It's going to be great, too, Marie. I'm sure it's going to be great.
So we're all set, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is Eric Christiansen, by the way, who runs Patriot Bartender, and I told him he had to be here today, so...
He got credit.
Okay, all right.
And a job well done.
Well, it's a testament to the fact that in the past, it's always worked out really well. So we just kind of moved it along.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. The next thing on the agenda is Community Service Officer appointment. The candidate is Kyler Giovanni Macoratti. And I noticed that the Director of Police Services, Paul Sashny, is here. Mr. Sashny, would you have to come to the podium? And Tony, do you have anything to say about this?
No, just, obviously, the Board a while back approved the establishment of the Community Service Officer Constable Program. The chief presented the Board with sort of the operating instruction that governs the program and the constraints around it that the Board also had a chance to review. And so tonight, we're looking to appoint our first CSO Constable, and I'll turn it over to the chief to introduce him. But this will be a great program that we hope to expand, you know, in the future, particularly during the busy summer months when the police department can often be stretched with different types of calls. And having a community service officer in various parts of town will be really a force multiplier for them, so... Chief?
Honorable Boyd, thank you, Mr. Tenoman, Administrator. Kyler Giovanni Macoratti is not only the first CSO, but he's going to be starting the Police Academy for Bourne in September. Kyler, we scored. As you would look at the requirements for the job, I want to point out, having a conversation, we try to keep this focused on opportunities for Bourne youth. And we put it out, and when we ended up coming across Kyler, Kyler was definitely willing, able, and wanted to get a jumpstart on his service to the town. Kyler graduated from Bourne High School in 2017. Attended Westfield University. He's got a bachelor's in criminal justice in 2021. He is, he went through the crucible for background testing. We implemented a brand new system to background people, and he is fantastic. So we had him dressed today to show you what this new CSO uniform will look like. You have a description of his job duties. He's going to be starting. This, make no mistake, he's not a police officer. He's going to be acting on the authority that you confer on him tonight, and I just wanted to introduce him to you. So Kyler, here he is.
Nice to meet you guys. How are you?
Good, thank you. Would you like to speak?
I mean, we can talk. Yeah. I guess you'd be in a smile.
Okay, thank you.
Does the Board have any questions for this, or anything to say?
Well, I would say, yeah.
No, 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 no.
Welcome, and I think it is, it's a great idea to have the presence around. There was somebody around last weekend. I don't know who he was, but I was kind of mystified by that, but it's nice to see you, so now we have a face with a name. And, you know, just having that presence and having the, the interaction with the, with people, I think really helps build the trust with the community and the familiarity, you know? So it's like, I know, I can talk to him, you know? So I think that's good. Thank you for stepping up. It might be a challenge.
For a challenge.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, welcome aboard. I think it's a great opportunity for you. It gives you time to mingle as well as get used to the areas and how the, the department divides its particular areas. I think it'll be a great starter point for you, and I think you're very lucky to be able to be the first one and jump in feet first, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. George or MJ?
Yeah, just, if I could imply, it's, be nice to have boots on the ground, especially the village is going through a lot of transition, and you're kind of the stability force here, I think. But where you're going to be able to process that information and see a lot of things that most other people who are doing patrols probably can't see. But it's, it's good to have this, and we look forward to your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto.
I have nothing more to say after three to five, but best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And knock it, knock it out of the park, and before you know it, you'll be a police officer in town.
Yes.
So should we have a motion?
I don't know. We, we have no appointment with the Board, do we?
Yeah, because it's a constable under chapter 4198, section 4198.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kyler Giovanni Macoratti as a community service officer with a term to expire on June 30, 2022.
Is that seconded? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is unanimous?
You are duly appointed.
See you around.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks, chief.
We're not quite 6:30 yet.
Close.
But, all right. The next thing on the agenda, it's the Recreation Committee appointment for one year. We have a vacancy on the Recreation Committee that came up suddenly, so now we have two people who are interested in one position. Linda Fleischer is present. Is Kristen Waika here? Kristen's here. Linda, you can go first.
Oh, thank you. Hi, good evening. Some of you I spoke to just a few weeks ago. Not much has changed, but I'll try to let all of you know why I feel that the Recreation Committee is something that I would be a positive, a positive start for our people in, in the town of Bourne. My previous job, I'm a retired registered nurse. I worked in acute care, open heart, CVICU. That demanded critical thinking, and you had to have attention to detail. I think that's a requirement for most, any kind of position you want to be in. In my younger years, I ran a 20-stall equestrian barn. I taught horsemanship, hunter jumper. I had students from the age of six to well into their 60s. We traveled all over the East Coast, so we were local here in, in Falmouth, in Mashpee. We were in Sarasota, New York, Westport, Connecticut. And one of the things, besides teaching, and the scope of that is a lot of teenagers, you have to have the ability to understand logistics. You have to move children, horses, equipment, know what parent's going to be doing what. And I, and after reading what is necessary on the Recreation Committee, I think understanding how to look at what we have, take it from here to there. What needs to be done, can wait, is a very important aspect of being a positive person on this committee. Right now, I sit on a five-man trustee board. I'm the Secretary Treasurer, and we run a 52-unit condominium here in Bourne. I also am involved with all of the insurance contracts for that. And I think I said this before, like the town, like the Recreation Committee, there is a finite amount of money that comes in, and you have to be able to adjudicate it appropriately. You have to know what has to be done right now. Where are we going to go with it? Can it be amateurized? What's capitalization for it? And then you have to present it annually to the homeowners, just like this committee is tasked to send, send a report to you people on what they are doing and why they're doing it. So I, I think that those are some of the life scopes that might help. We have three children, my husband and I, and of course, when they were growing up, we did the same thing. Coached, assistant coached, kept the score, schlepped them everywhere, you know, kissed the tears and congratulated them when everything was a good job. So I have an aspect, besides just the horsemanship, of what goes on for recreation for the youngsters. What else can I tell you? Also, I really think that I can enjoy my grandchildren a little bit more now, that when they go out there and enjoy this. That's sort of my what, what could I help with this? But the why, I think, is just as important. The why is that special feeling when you are able to go out and do what pleases you, whether it's a walk on our shores, whether it's bike riding, whether it's my passion, which is pickleball. When you get, when I see my grandson hit that ball and he goes, yes! That feeling is what happens when anybody goes to recreate. And I would like to be able to have that feeling to anyone that wants it in this town. As you said right over there, a healthy and active community, and that's my why. So I hope you can give me some consideration on this, and I would appreciate... And I would like to be able to have that feeling to anyone that wants it in this town. As you said right over there, a healthy and active community. And that's my why. So I hope you can give me some consideration on this, and I would appreciate being on the board. And thank you for your time.
Kristen?
I'm not as well-prepared as her often. Obviously, I have a pad, piece of paper here. But first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak before the board. My husband and I have been voting in the Bourne area for over twenty years. And three years ago, we became residents. Twelve months out of the year, we're outside enjoying all of the activities, as Linda referred to. We love this community, and that's why we reside here. I would like to become a member of the committee because I believe I have the skill set to provide a different way of managing a relationship. I was a relationship manager in the investment industry. And that skill set of working with people in different groups, I think, is going to be very important in succeeding with the recreation plan that we have before us. I am also a solid team player. I believe in being a team and make everybody successful at one point in time. I have reviewed the comprehensive open space and recreation committee plan. And I think there are so many groups that need to work together. And I have that capability, I believe, to bring this together so that vision can be a reality. In closing, I believe it's really important to give back to society. I have been active fundraiser with the Alzheimer's Group. I have done numerous memory walks and memory rides. I have also worked on a committee to help increase the ridership in such ride. And for ten years, I was a member of, I was riding in the Pan Mass Challenge, and I raised significant funds for the Dana Farber Fund. So that's what I have to bring together, and I hope I have an opportunity to be on the Rec Committee and have the enthusiasm that I show right now.
Thank you. Do the members have any questions for the applicants? Who wants to start, if there are any questions?
I don't have anything specific, but if there are no questions, I would like to put them both into nomination at the appropriate time.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, then, so you, you're, you want to put the two applicants, Linda Fletcher and Kristen Waika, in the nomination? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, seeing those are the only two applicants, all those in favor on nominating Linda Fletcher and Kristen Waika? Please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Ayes have it. All right, at this point, we're guessing whoever gets three or more votes will be the candidate that we will end up making the motion for. So we will, we will start with Jared.
I recommend Linda Fletcher.
Judy?
Kristen Waika.
MJ?
So I'm just going to say this is really hard again. We did, this was really difficult. We went through it last time, really great candidates, both are really qualified. I think I'll vote for Linda this time.
George?
I'm going to vote for Linda Fletcher.
All right, and I'm going to vote for Kristen. So Linda, by three, two vote. So who wants to make a motion to appoint Linda to a term to expire? Is there not a, okay?
June thirtieth, 2023.
All right, who wants to make that motion?
I'll go ahead and make it.
Second? Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All right, then, all those in favor of appointing Linda to that term, all say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Linda, you can pick up your information at the town administrator's office, or they'll mail it out to you. They'll be in contact with you.
Thank you so much.
Was that a five-zero vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I abstained.
She abstained, yes.
I'm mumbling, I'm mumbling, sorry.
All right, so four-zero-one.
Good ear.
Just make a passing comment, too.
Yeah.
Mr., yeah, I hope, Kristen, you stay involved because, yeah, it's nice to have, you know, too many qualified people, and we don't want to watch you drop off the, it sounds like you're pretty well-plugged into the, the community, and we hope to see you again.
Great community, you'll see me there.
Okay, thank you.
Judy?
Yes, I, I definitely would like to, I'd like to brought forward as pulling people together, rapport building, and relationship building. I think that that's, that's essential in this day and age and not, can't be, you know, just kind of set aside or taken for granted. And it sounds like you have a lot of great experience, so I do hope to see you again.
So the last time when we appointed members to the Recreation Committee, I said to Linda, you know, keep going to the meetings. Just because you're not on the committee, it's an open public meeting, and stay involved. So I'm going to say the same thing to you, that hope you'll stay involved because I think you have a lot to offer.
Good. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go back to, I, you know, the six-thirty public hearing is now six-thirty-five. Are the people here for Rod and Rail? Jennifer Reed, okay. All right, then. And I'm going to read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given, and according to Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve, that application has been received from DBA one-nine-one LLC, doing business as Rod and Rail, Jennifer Reed, manager, one-forties-five Main Street, Buzzards Bay, Mass, Buzzards Bay, Comber, Bourne, Mass, zero-two-five-three-two, for year-round common vicuress license for the sale of all kinds of beverages to be drunk on the premises. Description: One floor, consisting of eight rooms, dining room and bar area, kitchen, dishwasher room, prep room, office, storage room, and men's and ladies restroom, outside dining, and an eight-by-forty-five-inch fence patio, fence and patio, four entrances and four exits. A public hearing will be held on July sixth, 2021, at six-thirty PM at the Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center, two-thirty-nine Main Street, Buzzards Bay, Mass, zero-two-five-three-two. And it's listed, all five of us. Is there a, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so we'll do a roll call, so Jared?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Peter, yes? George?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Yes. So now, the hearing is now open. Jennifer, please come up. Do you have your green cards at all or notification?
Um, I do, yeah.
Please give them to.
Um, do you want the actual physical copies or?
Yeah.
Do I have a copy of the menu? No, we'll get hungry, and then we'll have to leave.
So Jennifer, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you so much for having me today. I am very excited to be working with you to help revitalize the Main Street area by bringing a new, exciting restaurant to town. My husband and I have a lifelong experience in the restaurant industry and have a passion for good food, good cocktails, great places to hang out, and great hospitality. So we're hoping that you will approve us to move forward with opening our wonderful new establishment, Rod and Rail, and provide us with a liquor license to be able to make sure you guys have a great place to hang out.
What, and what kind of establishment are we talking about? We talking appetizers and basic American food?
Um, it's going to be like creative comfort food. We're going to do a lot of fresh, locally sourced food products. We want to do a raw bar because, you know, obviously, being right on the Cape, we got to have fresh seafood. We're going to do a lot of like smaller type shareable plates. We're very excited about doing really great burger menu, as well as some great, like chicken sandwiches, as well as some entrees, but nothing too crazy. You know, just really good, creative.
Comfort simple, something?
Creative comfort, yeah.
Does any, any of the members have any questions? Seeing none. Any questions from the audience? I don't see any either, so is there a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
All right, then, MJ?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Peter, yes?
Judy, yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Jared, yes? Okay, so, all right, then, so now is there a motion?
Motion to approve year-round common vicuress license to DBA one-forty-nine LLC, DBA Rod and Rail, Jennifer Reed, manager, for the sale of all kinds of alcoholic beverages under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twelve. All alcoholic beverages shall be drunk on the premises located at one-forty-five Main Street, Buzzards Bay.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion from the audience? Best of luck.
Thank you so much. See you guys soon.
We haven't voted yet.
Tricked us, too.
I knew with this, sorry.
Um, all those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous now.
Thank you so much, guys.
Do we have roll call on that, or?
No.
Just to close the hearing.
It says roll call.
Yes.
We can roll call if you want, but we don't need to.
Making sure that we're.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night. Next thing on the agenda is road and traffic safety committee appointment. We have one, two, three, four, it looks like five department heads that seek an appointment. Tony, do you want to speak about this?
Yep, so again, a while back, the board approved the charge and the creation of the roadway traffic safety committee, which consists of the folks you see on your list, plus two residents, plus one member of the Board of Selectmen and Ex officio. So there's a lot of, I'll say, requests or things that people, you know, want to bring to this committee stacking up. So this will get the committee at least started with the appointment of the staff for the committee, and hopefully, a member of the board, a selectman here a little bit later on. We have advertised for the two resident positions on the committee. We have not received any talent bank calls yet, that I'm aware of. But obviously, when we do, we'll put those before the board. But I think it's important that we get the committee started, work on the requests that we currently have. So the expectation of the board post these appointments tonight, that they'll start meeting and start calling their way through some of the requests that we've, you know, had for, some for a while.
So does anybody have any questions on it?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is the correct title of this committee, the roadway traffic safety committee? Or the road and traffic safety committee?
I believe when I put it together, it was roadway traffic safety committee?
Because we have, it's like listed two different ways, so I just want to.
A little bit of a tongue twister, too.
Yeah.
Listen on the website also, it's a roadway traffic.
Okay, that's, that's good, so. There's no questions, I'll make a motion.
I guess, I do have a question about, some of the other, there were a number of different, I know I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did watch. I watched the replay. There's some other committees that have to do with roads and, and traffic and all of that. How does this all tie together? You can?
So those are separate. So this is more about if somebody is looking to have perhaps a no parking sign in some portion of the street.
Right, or they're looking for a speed limit change or a speed limit sign. They'll address some traffic, you know, issues that people, and this isn't about, how do you not have traffic back up at the Belmont Rotary? That's not really what this committee is for. We get a lot of requests that come in from different, you know, pockets in the different villages that, you know, need to get looked at. So we have an issue over on, I think it's Old Plymouth Road and.
Intersection?
And Clark. Really oddly, there's been a lot of accidents there. And so this committee would, you know, review that information and, and bring things back to the selectmen as the, you know, road commissioners. Definitely, in that case, you know, approve a, you know, redesign of that, that intersection. So we had the issue with County, Old County Road last year with the truck traffic, boat traffic, you know, and just that road not being suitable for large vehicles, especially going in boat directions should they happen to meet on that road. So they'll look at that and determine. What you find a lot of times is people think they know what they want to fix the problem, but there may be a different solution to the actual problem than what they actually want. So the committee's job is to really filter, be a filter for those things and determine, one, does the problem truly exist in the way that people think it does? What are the potential solution sets that would make sense? And then bring that to the board for approval, since, you know, many of those will be under the board's jurisdiction for, you know, whatever the resolution is going to be.
Thank you. It says I understood it.
Yes.
Just confirming, so thank you.
Any other discussion about this?
I mean, I would say that I, I like the idea of being able to have consistency and having, you know, a group of people. So it's not just a, you know, a, a single person making a, a decision, and then another single person undoing that decision. We've had some quite, some interesting adventures. So this is a nice solution, I think, a helpful solution.
Can I make a comment? I think it's a great solution because I've already had calls, I think, two, two since I'm on the board, about different traffic issues. And to be able to say, if you have this concern, go to this committee, and that's the people that you should talk to first, gives you a way to handle the concern. And I, so I think it'll be very helpful.
I do, too. I get a lot of calls, too. I drive through Clark Road a lot.
My only, my only question when it follows the timing goes, is the meetings will, the, this committee would meet during the day, and some people from the public that would like to serve work and would like to be able to come to a meeting at six or seven at night. And then that's the only way they'll be able to serve it, is at three in the afternoon, they can't get out. And if you want people from the public, more often than not, if you want someone that can come during the day, it's someone who's retired or, and it, or, you know, has a different circumstance, so they can be flexible with their job. So I guess, you know, just keep that in mind, you know, when you, when they.
Yeah, but if we don't get any applicants, obviously, then we may have to, you know, take a look at that. It's just with it primarily being made up of staff that, you know, gets a little difficult because a lot of them, you know, have other night meetings and night commitments. So we're trying to balance that out, but still, at the same time, make sure that the committee is able to be, you know, effective in, in their, in their mission. So it's only been out for a short time. If we don't get anything, we'll, you're right, we'll have to, we'll have to go back and potentially reassess it that, to determine whether that is the issue or not, so. Yep, good point.
Can always have morning meetings.
Yeah, well, you know, but let's, let's see who applies first.
Spend that day.
Oh, yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none, MJ, you have a motion?
A motion to appoint Lieutenant John Stowe, Chief David Cody, that's fire chief David Cody, TPW Superintendent Sean Patterson, Engineering Technician Tim Leiden, and Town Planner Corinne Moore to the roadway traffic safety committee with terms to expire June thirtieth, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, next thing on the agenda will be discussion and possible vote of temporary construction license to excavate on town property in IAW in approved septic easement area for one-thirty-five Circuit Ave, Bucasset. You want to speak about this, Tony?
Sure. IAW is in accordance with, so I apologize for the acronym. Just trying to keep it all on one line, more or less. So one-thirty-five Circuit Ave, similar to what we had last year with another property on Circuit Ave that had an easement from the town to install their septic system in. And so this one actually dates back to 2012, quite a while ago. So we had to do quite a bit of research just to make sure everything was in order, that the easement was filed and recorded. And so in your package, you have the easement, I believe, the town meeting vote. And they've had their plan approved by the Board of Health, but we need to authorize them now to actually dig on, on town property, which is done in the form of a temporary construction license. These have been used before, I believe, in town. And so it really authorizes them to actually hire the septic company, and they're authorized to then install the septic system. We did confirm that it's not in the roadway, the pavement area. But as you know, a lot of times, the, the right-of-way for the road is much larger than what the pavement is. So that was one thing we just wanted to make sure of, that it was not going to require them to actually dig up part of the pavement. So this is off pavement, just like, I believe it was five-ninety-four Circuit Ave that we did last year, so.
Is there any discussion? Let's see, is, we have someone here for one-thirty-five, right? Circuit Ave?
Yeah, sorry, exactly, yep, he was.
Okay, could you please come up?
Sure. Certainly willing to answer any questions on the design of the system. As Tony stated, there was granted an easement for the system back in 2012. This is for a septic repair. This isn't for new construction, an addition, or anything like that. This is just to repair an existing system. And due to the nature of the lot, there's literally no.
And due to the nature of the lot, there's literally no space to put it but within the road layout. As Tony stated, it's outside of the pavement area, being this line, that's the edge of pavement, and that's their existing driveway, which also exists within the layout. In fact, much of their, what they would call their front yard is within the layout. So the proposed system would go within essentially their front yard, which is within the layout, but outside of the pavement area.
Any other discussion on this request? Yeah.
So let's pretend Circuit Ave is going to get wider or taller. How will that, how does that end up affecting the setup?
Well, there is an existing easement granted by the town, so that would have to be resolved when that time comes.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly this one, but when we did 594, you could see where the road was and it was very unlikely that the town would ever, you know, decide to expand the width of the road out there. But as was mentioned, obviously, that they have a valid easement, which I believe is in perpetuity. So obviously, there's a legal commitment on the town, obviously, for the, for the easement. So even if they did the road.
I suppose they could go over it, but then, you know, they still have through the easement, the ability to, you know, do work, repair or reconstruction.
Would have to, you know, essentially get permission to dig it up again and put it back the way that it was when they're done.
Yep.
Through the chair. So septic system can be designed, right, to handle vehicle traffic? Is there any consideration for that here? And particularly just, you know, so where I can really see the property line is, is right at the front of the house. And kind of maybe typical Cape Cod, lots of people do park on their front yards all summer long or all year long.
Correct. Traditional septic systems and, and other, other innovative systems can be designed for traffic loading. This particular system is actually what's called a GeoFlow drip tube system. It's very similar to irrigation tubing within the ground. It lies very close to the surface of the, of the, of what grade, you know, the lawn. It's only about six to 12 inches below grade. That cannot be driven over. And, and part of the easement of this actually is proposed, a, some sort of fence, like a split rail fence or something of that nature in order just to block traffic from ever driving over that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that's only the, the leaching portion?
It is. Correct. That's only the leaching field. Correct.
The tank is still drivable.
Exactly.
So I do have one other question. Looking at the property, i- is this going to be something that they're going to have a machine and a truck in the roadway on a regular basis? Or is it something that we can have one or the other in the roadway, since it's very close?
Within the actual lim, you know, within the paved roadway, you're saying?
Yes.
That will, there is quite a bit of space on either side of it between their driveway and just the, you know, the lawn adjacent to it. It's still within the roadway layout. And there, I'm sure it will be times when there is a truck within the roadway.
It doesn't look like it's so cramped that they're going to have to.
No, and it does not, the field itself does not require a large machine to install. So there will be a machine there, a large machine to put in the tank, but not for the field itself.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on this?
A proposed date for this to happen? Is that too early for that or?
For that, I'm just going to defer to Kathy. Do you have any?
I'm here, Wagner.
Yeah.
So I plan on doing it in the fall based on how busy Circuit Avenue gets in the summertime. I thought that was the right move. I wanted to do it last fall, but unfortunately that didn't happen. But I think this is the, you know, probably late September.
Okay. Yeah. Skipping 4th of July was a good move too. I think, so that's, I know what that's like down there.
And the system is, as said, a D-Night system is what you call it.
Correct. Yep.
Which is obviously a lot more environmental friendly, a lot more expensive, but a lot more environmental friendly. So I think it's a good thing for the street.
Mr. Cannon?
I, I guess there's one thing to consider. So, so when the board actually signs the construction license, there is a provision for construction to begin 90 days from the issuance of the Board of Health permit. So let's just make sure we're, we're there. I don't know when, have you already applied for the Board of Health permit? It's been issued. Did I know that?
We've gone through Board of Health for approval of variances.
So the contract hasn't.
Disposal works permit has not been submitted yet.
So that's just a fact added in. You, like I say, you only have the 90 days. So.
Which would bring us into. I'm ready to go. Absolutely like.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to allow digging on town land under town bylaw section 3.1.2 through a temporary construction license to Catherine Wagner for the installation of a septic system as shown on the plan titled Proposed Subsurface Sewage Disposal Plan in Bourne, Massachusetts dated September 30th, 2020 for 135 Circuit Avenue and confined to the terms of the easement granted at the October 17th, 2011 special town meeting and recorded on November 27th, 2012.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the motions? Saying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're closed. Ayes have it. It's unanimous. All right then. Next thing on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annual committee appointments renewals. There was a list that was given out. We can go down the list of these committees and see if, you know, who wants to stay, who wants to serve on, sort of thing. Looking for our list.
Through, through the chair.
I think that's a different item.
All right. We'll go down.
No, these are like, this isn't the Board of Selectment committees. This is the other committees though.
I am so sorry. I am not in my game tonight.
It's all right, Mr. Chair. You know, they're, they're both called the Selectment Committee Appointments.
Right.
Whether it's the board, I, I, the naming, I tried to play around with it.
It matters not.
I couldn't come up with anything that was less confusing. So I stuck, I stuck with it.
It's not your fault. I'm just not having a good day and I apologize for that. So the first thing on the list is the possible county home consortium's born representative. Is David Quinn here?
I don't see him. No, they all responded to Mary sends out request for the committee reappointment. So they weren't specifically invited to come back for reappointment, just to offer their consent that they wanted to be reappointed. So the folks you have on your list have said they want to continue in their respective roles.
I could make a motion to reappoint David Quinn to the Barnstable County Home Consortium with a term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the motion? Saying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Ayes have it. The Human Services Committee, Born Human Services Committee. Is there a motion?
Motion to reappoint Brandon Esip and Chris Power to the Human Services Committee with both terms to expire on June 30th, 2024. Should we say Born Human Services?
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that motion? Saying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Ayes have it. The Born Landfill Business Model Working Group. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to reappoint Stanley Andrews, Sean Patterson, and Robert Schofield to the Born Landfill Business Model Working Group with all terms to expire on June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the motion? Saying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Ayes have it. Next agenda item is the Historic Commission. Richard Cantor, we need some, it says here that we need to reappoint Richard Cantor as an associate member term towards buyer June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Ayes have it. Special Works Opportunity Program. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Elizabeth Walhax, Susan Cronin, and Judith Sharick to the Special Works Opportunity Program with all terms to expire on June 30th, 2022.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? It's unanimous. Next thing on the agenda is a council and agent presentation. I don't see Debbie here.
Oh, she is.
She is.
She was. She's coming, I think. Yeah, she's coming.
Glenn, you'll be happy to know I reorganized your pile.
Because you did it wrong.
With the agenda.
You did it wrong. Debbie, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Olivieri from the Born Council on Aging. Tony asked me to come here and just give you a brief overview of the reopening of the COA. As you can imagine, these past 15 months have been quite challenging for our older adult community. And I don't think there was a cohort that was impacted more than our older adult community. For safety, for the safety of all concerned, last March, the building was closed. However, the COA staff remained in their offices assisting seniors by phone, email, weekly Zoom. Can you all hear me? And weekly Zoom chats. All of our fitness programs went online. They were broadcast on BTV. We had weekly to-go meals. That continued. We were delivering meals to seniors. We had several drive-through events. In October, we were opened by appointment for essential services such as SNAP applications, tax assistance, mobile dental podiatry, and fuel assistance. As the vaccine rollout happened over the, the winter months, we were working collaboratively with the Health Department and the Fire Department and the Housing Authority to coordinate efforts helping seniors get the COVID vaccine. We helped organize senior housing and homebound clinics. And we sent a weekly list of seniors that needed assistance that could not get on the computer to Cape Cod Community Health, Cape Cod Community Health and Cape Cod Healthcare. By May, this all kind of took care of itself and the vaccine was readily available in your local pharmacy. So that kind of moved off of our desk. In June, the community building opened its doors and the COA started with just a few programs. We did have to have some repairs during COVID. We had another flood. I know, hard to imagine in this building, we had another flood. So we had to really kind of repurpose the room and kind of rethink how we could bring more programs to all of our seniors and utilize this room, this space. Because now we know we have to socially distance and, you know, just make it a safer room for people to come in and utilize. So the repairs were done in May and so we opened in June, as I said, for just a few programs, just to test the waters. But I am happy to say, as of July 1st, we are open with most of our programs. And beginning tomorrow, we are going to launch Wellness Wednesdays. This will be a social group, starting in the morning at around 9:30. We have, already have some seniors signed up for it. It will be run by our social worker and our activity coordinator. And it will, they will have, they will come in, have a little coffee, have a little socialization. We know bringing the seniors back into the building is something we have to do thoughtfully. And to keep in mind, you know, that people are still afraid and COVID is still out there. So we, we want to be very mindful of that and bring everybody back in safely. Starting next week, the VNA will coincide a wellness clinic. So the folks who are here can have their blood pressures checked. They can go in and have a one-on-one consultation with the nurse. After that, if participants choose to stay, they can stay for mindful meditation with Sherry or they can go for a walk on the canal for some exercise with, with Kari. We are hoping to add a volunteer driver as we just procured a new van from RTA. So we have a 2021 and a 2018 bus now. And as the volunteers are coming back in the building, we're hoping to get some volunteer drivers to maybe get some of the seniors brought here that would not be able to drive themselves. And then eventually, we need to add a chef back in and then they could have a lunch and they will have like a full day of programming. So we're starting with that. We also will have all of our quilting and fitness classes and support groups and Reiki and book club. And we have several events planned for the summer as well. Coming out of COVID, the social isolation, older adults experienced. I think it's important to design programs like this to really kind of foster social engagement. I'm happy to report the volunteers were back in the building. You may have noticed if you came in through the front, we have a new welcome desk. If you go into most community buildings or senior centers, there's, you, it's usually staffed by senior volunteers that welcome people in and help them get around the building. When you walk in the, the front of this building, it can be a little overwhelming, that vestibule. So I'm happy to do that. And the special events we're going to have this summer, I would like to invite all of you to come. We have a ice cream social on Monday down at Buzzards Bay Park. Mick's Main Scoop is going to provide the ice cream. Next Wednesday, we have a welcome back breakfast in the cafe. And Wednesday, August 11th, we have a food truck event with the pineapple caper. I applied for and received a grant for this food truck event. Coming in September, we have some new programs. We'll have an end of summer cookout, technology classes, financial planning, drum circle, and garden club, just to name a few. So that's really, I have, I brought my summer newsletter for you all to peruse. And if you have any questions, my number is on the back. You can certainly call me if you have any questions or comments.
Do the board members have anything?
Yeah, just a, a couple of questions and a comment. The Council on Aging was really integral in the formation of the fixed route service. You talked about the RTA and I know they supplement your transportation that you already have, but it's nice to have that new vehicle. And, but I think you have the, the feet on the ground to be able to inform the RTA where the, the destinations are, the, of, of our seniors for fixed route service. I realize we have.
Well, they have their fixed route service, but as you know, they're in contract, well, actually the contract went to GATRA, I think, for some, for the, for the, for some of the services. So they kind of go back and forth with the contract.
Right. And I think Tom Care is aware of the fact, I think there is a transition going on right now because it, it was a, a strange arrangement with GATRA going over the canal. And a lot of people are confused as to which.
And it's very confusing for this area because, you know, Wareham is there and they're Plymouth County and Plymouth is there and they're Plymouth County and we're Buzzards Bay, Bourne is part of Barnstable County and it's the RTA. So.
But anyway, he's enhancing the local transportation options for the Village of Buzzards Bay primarily, but also, you know, the entire town. But we're looking forward to that. As well as the, the, you know, the, what is left of the supportive day program, which we understand what happened to that, but.
Well, as you know, it was eliminated last year and that's why I'm trying to start these programs like Wellness Wednesdays to foster social engagement. That was a social program. We're also the referral agency for the town for the elders. If someone needs a day program, we can refer them to Gateway over in Wareham. There are many support groups, you know, through Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands. We have a support group through Cape Cod Healthcare and Alzheimer Family Support Services is also offering a, a lot of family support and caregiver education. So. And we have that all in my newsletter. So.
That's right.
So, you know.
I received it, but I haven't read it yet.
So, you know, last year we had 12 employees. This year we have eight. You know, we're trying to make the best of what we have and utilize the staff that I have. And we're very aware, that program was very near and dear to my heart. And, you know, so we want to, we want to service the elders of this community the best way that we can. And we know the numbers are rising. I, you know, that when the 2020 census comes out, it would be interesting to see where Bourne falls. So.
You're doing a wonderful job picking up the pieces and.
Oh, thank you. We've had a lot of lemons this year. Trying to make some lemonade. So. Is that it?
Yes. Thank, for me, yes. Who wants to go next?
You can go. Okay. Yeah. The job that you've been doing, always readjusting, always having to think through the logistics and think resourcefully and creatively. That amount of work cannot be underestimated. And it, it is refreshing to know that, okay, things are starting to open up and think. But then there's a lot of details connected with that. So.
Absolutely.
You know, I applaud you for keeping so many things moving and going. You know, I applaud you for keeping so many things moving and going along throughout COVID and, you know, caring about the isolation of people and wanting to make sure that people still had connections. I mean, you were very assertive with that in terms of, you know, getting your team out there. And now it's time for everybody, you know, to start kind of re-acclimating back into connecting. And it'll be really good for people. And I like the emphasis on the being active and healthy. Because, well, you know, you think Council on Aging, you think, you know, you think it's old people, but it could be just about any of us. So, you know, it is important, so.
Thank you for all your hard work.
All right.
So I have one question because you were doing the exercise programs on Board Community TV.
Yes.
Is that going to continue?
Yes, because we had such a wonderful response from folks that were like, I am homebound. I cannot get down to the senior center, you know, this, this works for me. And having it available on our website, they can do it at any time they want as well. So we're going to continue to offer that.
Yeah, I think that sounds really good.
Yeah.
I think, you know, change brings change and so.
Right. It's a new world we're living in, so, you know.
Thank you very much.
Okay? I'll just leave these here for you.
I'm good.
All right, we're not done yet.
Oh, okay.
All right, Jared, do you have anything?
I'd just like to say thank you. I mean, it is an immense amount of work and it does take a certain type of person and it can be very challenging, especially with COVID. I think, you know, one of the good things that comes out of it is, like you said, the activities that are online and on the television.
Right. We did a lot of Zoom.
Yeah, I think that's really expanded part of your job. So it brings a little more work to you, but on the other hand, it gives you the ability to reach more people. And I really appreciate it.
It absolutely does.
Debbie, does a member from the public that wants to come up?
Hi.
Come to them.
Hi, thank you. I'm Happy Batzogel and I live in Buzzards Bay and have lived here for about 34 years. And I worked in the, I've been working in the healthcare industry for 30 years in the nursing home. And now I'm a certified care manager and elder advocate. And I appreciate everything that Debbie has done. It's been a very difficult year for all of us. And I appreciate all of the programs that we have. I'm looking at the Adult Day program. I'm concerned because as, as much as we have all those wonderful programs going on, we are missing that, as you had said Judith, you know, it's great for us, but there's a population out there too that's older. And they're homebound. There's no socialization anymore. Before I came tonight, I did a little research to just see what's out there. A lot of the Supportive Day programs have closed and they will not reopen for different reasons. Funding, staffing. Staffing's a big problem in this, this industry today. It's very difficult to get people to do this type of work. And Debbie, I know her staffing has been cut back. When you look at the town of Bourne, we have approximately 20,000 people. 5,000 people are elderly, over 65 and over. 1,700 are veterans. We have a lot of population here that there's a lot of needs to that I'm looking at possibly trying to do something more with the Supportive Day as we go down the road. I understand that we're not, it's not in the budget. A lot of it isn't in the budget. I had a long conversation with the director at the Middleborough Council on Aging this past week, last week, as well as Joe Rizzo, who runs Gateway Adult Day Center in Wareham, which is a medical model, not a social day program. And a lot of it is funding. Middleborough is totally supported by the town of Middleborough. They pay their staff 100%. They get funding obviously from Elder Services, private, and Mass Health also is funding that too. But I think we have to look at that piece for our elder population that is out there. One-third of Bourne is older. And I can get here and I can do these programs, but somebody that's 80 and not as high functioning as me doesn't drive, they can maybe get the transportation, but you have to lead them sometimes. And I have brought with me, Mary Beth is an occupational therapist and she's worked in the field a long time. And what her job is, is she works with them in rehab and then sends them home. They go home to an empty household or they're with their, their daughter and their daughter goes off to work all day. And she brought up a very good point to me earlier. It's the diet too. Like they were eating at Social Day, they're going home and they're not eating like they were. So that's a, the nutrition is a big part as we get older because we have more medical problems, we have physical problems, and diet is essential. And she says this a lot in her field where the people go home and nobody's there to make them dinner, lunch. The daughter has to go off working and so forth. So I guess what I'm here for is an advocate for that population that cannot come and do the programs, that maybe looking at the Social Day program again and maybe considering it in your budget down the road might be beneficial for the 5,000-plus people that we have here that maybe could use it. So.
Also, Mary Beth.
Mary Beth, if you could just say who you are and how you're affiliated, please.
Who I am?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Gugosa and I'm from Buzzards Bay. I'm an occupational therapist and I also have a degree in human services. And I've worked with the geriatric population 25 years plus. Being a therapist and getting the population to go home, you know, broken hips, whatever it may be. They go home to empty houses. They, every person needs structure in their life. I know people, they look forward to therapy at nine o'clock every day. When they go home, they have nothing to look forward to. They're alone. There's going to be some kind of support group for COVID. I mean, we all went through it and they went through it really hard, the geriatric population. They were never really given a closure. They couldn't have the religious services that they were used to. So COVID isn't over for them. I mean, they still have big losses. They've been isolated for 15 months, sitting home. I see so much more depression in my patients. It's, it's a very sad thing and I think we really have to get some kind of funding for our geriatric population. It's, it's very sad that programs have stopped.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this brings up a very good point. I think going forward, we do have a large elderly population, be it over 65. We have a lot more coming. We've made arrangements for these folks to have living spaces across the street. So we're going to have more and I think it's very important that in the future, we, we do need to look to expand a lot of the programs that we do have. And that's going to require staffing and financing and such. And I think this brings a very good point, that we do have to start to address this better. With COVID and the lack of socialization, I think it changes a lot of the programs and how we apply them. And I think we're going to need more funding for that. And I think this is a very good opportunity for you folks to come forward and I think, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
MJ?
I actually have a question about the difference between the 12 employees and the eight employees.
Sure.
You had a lot of your employees, especially I think the ones in the Supportive Day, were grant-funded, right?
Two were grant-funded and one was funded through the revolving account. So the fee that was paid for the Supportive Day paid for my former position, the Supportive Day Director. And we paid those employees as long as we could with no revenue stream coming in. You know, that money ran out. And the Formula Grant is, if you don't know what that, does everybody know what the Formula Grant is? It's a line item in the state's budget, so we will be subject to 2020 census numbers. We've been going off of 2010 census numbers, which are 5,166 seniors. We do anticipate that to go up to closer to 7,000, but we won't know. And we don't know what the state is going to give us for a dollar amount. We are hearing that it might go down because they know the numbers are going up. But I, I won't know that until the fall.
So perhaps through the chair, because I think we need to put a little bit more clarity to this. So the Supportive Day program wasn't eliminated strictly because of budgetary reasons. In fact, that was just a sideline. The fact of the matter is, we had a very serious pandemic that isn't, isn't over yet, even though folks are out getting vaccinated and that sort of thing. The real crux of it was, was health and safety for the participants in the Supportive Day program as well as the staff because of the fact that in most of the time that they're together, they're in extremely close contact with one another. And there is still concern, concern for the employee as well as those that are being served by the program. If you recall, the folks that we had in the Supportive Day program, 40% to 45%, were not residents of Bourne. And so all of that kind of, you know, resulted in it was becoming more of a medical-type setting that was really being staffed by volunteers. And so I think, you know, when you go through a pandemic, just like we've gone through other, whether it's 9/11 and so, you know, things change. And you have to sort of reinvent and figure out, okay, what are the different ways now that we can take care of the population that the two ladies that just spoke? But it may be in a different format than perhaps what we traditionally thought of as, you know, sort of the Supportive Day program. And so, you know, I've had a number of meetings with Debbie to sort of talk through that and say, okay, now how, how do we reinvent? How do we ensure that we're providing that necessary type of programming to that population, which is part of a much bigger population? So you have different cohorts within the folks that look at the Council on Aging for various services. Everything from folks that are in their late 50s and 60s looking for certain things, as well as folks that are, you know, perhaps later on in their years and maybe having some other issues that we can, you know, provide assistance for. So I think we'll grow into that and some of the feedback that we get from folks in the community about, you know, what are some of the innovative things that Council on Aging's are looking at to be able to do that? Now she, Debbie talked about a couple of those. So coming out of a pandemic, it's not, you know, ready, ready rush back, right back into, you know, what it was in March of 2020. And more, you know, walk before you run, let's get feedback. What is it that, that folks are really, you know, looking for? And what are those newer programs, whether they're, you know, memory-type cafes and things like that to help folks with, with that particular issue as well as other ones? So I think as we come out of this, and it's only been, you know, literally a month or so since they, you know, released all the restrictions. But for that particular group, as Debbie said, we're still social distancing when we're together with them and things like that because they are still in a vulnerable population. And, you know, as we all know, vaccines are great, but they're not, you know, bulletproof in terms of somebody getting this, this disease. And if there truly is going to be other variants that may come down the road, we got to be very thoughtful and careful with how we do this. But I think over time, I think we will begin to be able to address the needs of that particular cohort and what, you know, works for, for everybody. Because you do also have to have staff that are willing to go into that environment to work with, with that, you know, population and helping them with the needs that they have. So we're just beginning that, so we need more feedback to see if what we're doing is effective and is there other things that we can then, you know, add on to the, I'll say the, the sort of menu of programs? And if eventually that results in being able to add increased staff, then that's exactly what you do. And that's where our strategic plan comes in. And you look at, if we provide this program, what aspect of the community are we helping? How many people will we be able to reach? And then you put the funding towards it and then you, you go and then you analyze your, your performance indicators to say, yes, we, through this new program and the staff that we added to that, we're reaching, you know, 250, you know, new people every year and we're addressing a major, you know, need that the community has. And so you have to have that circle of analysis that goes with that. And that's really the whole impetus behind our strategic plan and the goals and objectives that Debbie will come up with as she builds, like the other department heads, their FY23 budgets. And what is it they want to add and what will that, you know, be, what resources will be needed to support that? So that's, you know, kind of the track that we're, we're currently on. So we need to keep that lines of communication open and, and get a better understanding of what are some different and innovative ways that we can, we can do some of this work? Because honestly, I don't think it's necessarily recreating the Supportive Day program the way it existed, you know, 14 or 15 months ago. It'll be a little different, but that's a really important part of our community that we have to figure out how to reach and, and take care of, essentially.
Does anybody have any follow-up questions? From the board first, in the audience, board.
So the reason I ask a question about the Formula Grant and the revolving fund is the revolving fund is money where people pay in fees and that pays for a position.
Right.
So if you don't have the program, you don't have that position.
There's no revenue.
The Formula Grant you get based on our population. And then what you use that Formula Grant for is determined by what priorities you set. Is that where? So I think I thought before that it was grant-funded positions by applying for a grant for-
No, yeah.
No, 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 no.
Right, no.
So, so that's okay. So that's, that's a good clarification. So we get the Formula Grant, so we, we're getting that money. And so money that we were as a town spending, is, is that what's been reduced? Basically because you have positions that have been reduced that you don't need anymore?
Well, the Supportive Day is not running, so those positions were eliminated.
And you've shifted that.
And there are a couple of people, you know, we had one town employee, which was the activity coordinator. So now she has a new job. She has a new position. And post-COVID, there's a lot of different things for her to do. But the other positions are, they're not here anymore. So without those positions, they can't run the program.
That's helpful. That's a good clarification.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I like to understand the funding.
No, I know you do. Okay?
Does anybody else on the board or the staff have any follow-up questions before I go back out to the audience?
Nope.
Mr. Batzogel, come up to the podium.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one more thing moving forward. As I said earlier, I was in touch with Gateway Adult Day Program, which is a medical model. It's not a social. And the gentleman that, that runs the program, who owns the program basically, is Joe Rizzo. He is willing to collaborate with us, he said, if we want going forward, to collaborate with Bourne and work something together, maybe to, you know, get more of our population out there. I'm not sure. It would be something we'd have to discuss and maybe we talked about maybe putting a panel together to have a discussion about how we can better serve that population that we have out there that, that just don't, that cannot come to the programs that we offer or put something together for them. And maybe a small panel would be good to have that we can talk about it. But Mr. Rizzo was very, very helpful in talking to me about how the social and the medical model difference is and the funding. And as I said earlier, Middleborough funds the program 100% with the town. So maybe, you know, looking forward, maybe we could do something down the road. But Mr. Rizzo said he would be certainly willing to participate or talk to us in the future.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you so much.
So maybe you can get me his contact info?
This is on mute. This is on mute. That's, this red light means that somebody muted it. Yep. And somebody muted this one. These buttons here? Yep, those are muted. So this one's off now. Okay, push that one again.
You're doing the best you can with what you have.
Let me see this.
But there are, there are that population that's out there.
Take that one. Yep.
I'm, I'm very aware. I am very aware.
I think, I just think that, you know, I can say that for many years, you know, we need to do what we can to make sure the elder population is always protected and geared for. You know, they, they worked their whole lives, put their kids through the system, paid their taxes, worked. Now they're older and we need to take care of them. I mean, I've lived it, you know, everybody knows my story by now, what I had to do to take care of my grandmother. So, and she was part of that program.
She was.
I know. And so, and, and, you know, this building was sold to the voters based on bridge in the years, being built and being occupied.
Well, that was an addition. That was an addition after the initial building, so.
I mean, but it was part, it's part of the bond and it was, you know, it was talked about. We weren't here at the time. We were talking 2002. But, you know, I think we need to do, you know, things are changing, things are evolving. But I also think we need to figure out how we can provide that service, you know, maybe not in the model that it was two years ago before COVID. But, you know, and, and the baby boomers are getting older and they need to play, you know, they need to do activities, but I want to make sure they're providing all that we can provide for them. Because, you know, there are people like my parents' age who are newly retired in the last few years that are very active. And then we've got people in their late eighties, early nineties who are at their wit's end. And those are the ones, sometimes they get forgotten because they're part of the medical system when, you know, by that time. But, but I'm always here, I'm always here to help out. And if you need this board to stand behind doing more for our elderly, I'm all for it.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Debbie.
Spare one second, our battery is pretty much, most of them died.
These are all good.
So the people at home can hear us loud and clear instead of being texting.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is Department of Public Works' presentation on temporary emergency measures for Howard Ave. The town administrator, the assistant town administrator, and Sean Patterson, the superintendent of public works have been working on this. I will defer it to the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before Sean goes through a brief, you know, presentation, this is probably the one of the area that I've probably heard the most from, you know, in the twenty months that I've been here, visit a few times. It's a real, it's a real challenge and it really goes to the crux of the issue of, you know, what will happen over time as, you know, more than fifty percent of our roads are what we call unaccepted but open to the public that aren't, you know, maintained by the town or the residents. And you will eventually get to the situation we're going to talk about tonight that is not only just a problem for the residents that live on the street, but, you know, we go to the taxpayers fairly routinely for very specialized, expensive pieces of equipment, not just in DPW, but fire and other places that are getting, you know, getting damaged, you know, doing their jobs on these particular streets. We had an employee that was injured last year, you know, hitting a pothole in one of our big trucks and wrenched his back. So we've been working on a plan for a while in conjunction with the residents because we know we have to follow our current and existing bylaws and other rules as it relates to these streets. So Sean's had a number of meetings, I think, with the local residents. And we've put together, I think, a plan that will help us at least address in sort of an expedited manner to get the road in a reasonably passable condition with the thought that the residents would do similar to, say, Laura Lane and New Ova Road and eventually go through the betterment process to put the road in a, you know, sort of a more, you know, acceptable manner in terms of our current standards. So we're going to go through a couple of slides and just give you an idea of what we're proposing because obviously we would need the board's concurrence to execute this plan. So Sean, you got the floor and I'll manage the slides for you.
Oh, thank you. And thanks for having me, I appreciate it. I'm very passionate about this as well. And I need to stand over here so you can see the slides. I took these pictures the other day. And this is the Lake Howard, as we all know it. It is a dangerous situation, I think Lieutenant Stokken.
Hold your microphone.
Can you hear me?
It's for the TV.
It's for the TV at home.
How's that? So I think Lieutenant Stokken verified this too. We lost a cruiser in this pond one time. We did?
Yeah.
And it's totally impassable. It's like four feet deep and we can't get our trucks to there either. So in order to provide emergency services, we have to go all the way around, which, we'll give you another four or five minutes on response time for an ambulance or a fire truck or the police department for that matter. Go to the next one.
Yeah, and just, just because he didn't touch on it, but right below that, obviously, when you have that much standing water, especially in certain times of the year, it also becomes a public health risk with certain types of insects such as mosquitoes and other things that will find a nice breeding ground in a large stagnant situation like what you see on your screen.
This slide here, I took this picture because I wanted to show you all this area over here between the two houses on Howard Ave. In this area here is a ravine. And it's probably about ten, fifteen feet deep. That was used for a drainage easement. It's not on paper, it's not in the records anywhere, but I was told by the neighbors I talked to that we did drain water in there years ago. That is probably the best place we could drain the water to get rid of it out of that pond. We cut a little loopway through here. There's two basins in here somewhere, I don't know where they are, we got to try and find them and maybe pipe into that and get rid of the water that way and build this back up so we can drive over it again and gain access both ways into Howard Ave. This here is one of the large potholes. This wasn't as bad as the other ones I saw. But what I wanted to do, when I say box out the, you'll see that in the next slide. I say box out, I like to cut the hole square and go down six inches, get down to good material, put our millings in there four feet, four inches deep, then cap it with asphalt. Some more of the craters. This is the big one I was talking about, it's about eight to ten inches deep, I measured it. That is a backbreaker. Some more. Catch basin is full of sand. They aren't functioning at all. They need to be sucked out, looked at. Probably have to jet some of the lines to get the dirt out of them so that they actually function. Because the end result is all the water runs down the hill and it goes into that lake. There's another one, there's my feet. And this one here, you can't even see the basin because it's buried under the four inches of sand. This is a bylaw that we talked about. This was put into action in nineteen seventy-eight. This is one of the highlighted areas that I highlighted to show what we want to do. I'll let Tony explain more about this part of it. And this is the proposal I drew up and what we want to do to provide temporary repairs to that road going forward. I think everybody has been given a copy of it.
You can give the highlights, you know, people at home could be watching us because they're not going to be able to read that small print.
Wasn't in the packet?
Well, the scope of work is to, first of all, clean out the basins so they operate. We can get rid of the water off the road. Build and repair the potholes, like I explained, box them out, get them back up so you can drive over the road and get rid of Lake Howard, as I spoke before. Drain the water up into the bushes.
So generally speaking, you know, obviously because if you look at the bylaw, obviously the residents have to, you know, pay for, you know, these emergency repairs. But, you know, by and large, you know, and I don't know how many, you know, in terms of quantity, you know, millings we have, but it's enormous, right? So that stuff is on hand, it's sitting at DPW. And so the amount of cost associated with that is really more time, right? To have them box out the potholes, dig down the six inches, lay the millings in, and then really the cost of the asphalt. You know, in terms of the catch basin, you know, the fact, if you ever looked at a catch basin, they're pretty darn deep. And if you think you have every one on a street completely full of sand, you know, that's just, it's just not acceptable. So we have a back truck that the town bought a number of years ago and they can suck out all the sand and then we can jet the lines with equipment we already have to ensure that they're, you know, they're functioning the way that they should. And then as it relates to, you know, the ponding at the end of the street, it's really digging it out, putting gravel in, creating, as Sean said, functioning catch basins that are already existing to drain off into the ravine that goes between those two houses that you saw. So you met with the resident, at least one of the residents recently? I don't know, is there anybody here from Howard?
I don't think so. I recognize, no, I did meet with the two ladies.
So right now, what we're waiting for them is, you know, we have sort of, I'll call it a rough order of magnitude estimate on the cost. And now they're contacting the residents on the street to see if there's an appetite. You know, we figure with the number of houses there, it's only a couple hundred dollars apiece would be enough funding for us to go in and perform the scope of work that Mr. Patterson mentioned, to at least get the road, you know, in a better condition. And again, part of that expectation would be that they would petition the board of selectmen for a town meeting warrant article for a betterment to actually go in and do some really, you know, significant type repairs on the roads and the drainage system like we have seen other residents do on the streets that they live on. So that's kind of where we're at. Barring that, there isn't a lot that we can really do, but we need to do something for both the residents, obviously, but also for our equipment, our people, and frankly, public health and public safety. Obviously, we'll entertain questions. I don't think this has ever been tried before or we couldn't find any record if it's been tried before, but we have a bylaw that allows us to do this with the boards, okay? So we never mind being the first.
So my one thought, my concern is putting it into that ravine, is there an easement that has to be drawn up or is there, it is something that we'll have to go through?
Well, I mean, it doesn't, I don't, I mean, you know, Sean has talked to the residents on both sides.
I have.
You know, obviously if we have to get an easement and the town wants to accept an easement, I believe that's going to have to go to town meeting. So that, you know, sort of delays that process, you know, probably longer than we would want to. So I haven't talked to town council about to see if there's another way to sort of skin that cat and at least get us to the point that we can do that and maybe, you know, work the easement thing down the road. I don't really know about that. But, but we have talked to both residents on both sides and apparently it's been used before for the same purpose. So we don't have an actual easement to do that.
There's two basins in there, Jared, that we got to find first. I don't know where they are, they're somewhere in that hole. If we can get those functioning, I was going to, my thought was to use that ravine as an outlet for the excess water.
Some will be naturally draining. Is that, is it more for the bigger storm? Right, okay.
Hopefully we can just pitch it that direction.
That was my thought.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the board? Yes, MJ.
So I'm interested in getting town council's opinion on whether the way our bylaw is currently written means that we can't do emergency repairs for public safety reasons. Because when you look at a lot of towns who have bylaws for unaccepted roads, they separate it, they separate it out where if it's an emergency repair for public safety, you know, under a certain amount of, sometimes they put in money that the DPW superintendent says should be done, that they do it. And there might be two, maybe not all the work, but some of the work, I mean, particularly filling potholes, you know, that are, or something, I mean, which are not expensive or the drains that are not expensive. I would be interested in town council's opinion as to whether there's anything preventing us from just doing this work. You know, minor work for emergency purposes for public safety access. So I would really like to hear town council's opinion on that. I think we do have to work on this bylaw because we have this all over town and we have to, there's been changes in how things are done. And so I think that's really important to get that particular answer from town council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just want to follow up on MJ's point. So I think one of the important parts is the potholes that you're pointing out are on those hills that lead into that pond.
Pretty much all the way down the road, yeah.
Yeah. And so the, one of the biggest reasons that those patches would have to be repaired is because the sand is coming out of those patches and going into the drains and that's what's filling these drains up. So it would be crucial to make sure that we at least do certain repairs to certain larger holes in order to keep the sand from washing into the basins. So I think, I think they kind of go hand in hand and that's maybe not something that we really pointed out, but it is important to point those, those potholes are not, they're not potholes. They're large enough to fit cars in some of them.
They are.
And if we don't do something with those and then we do all the work at the bottom, we're just, we're just going backwards. We're going to go in a circle. So I think that's important to put out there that, you know, there's a reason for doing that. We're not just picking certain potholes. We're picking the large ones that are really taking away the roadway as well as the sand that's filling these basins.
You know, just to touch on what you're saying, it's very difficult to plow. We destroyed a truck in that last year, last winter. And it's just getting to the point where we can't bring rubbish trucks up there. The plows can't make it up there without bringing a big truck in or a loader. It's kind of counterproductive. And not to mention the police department can't, they can't get through there, or the fire department.
So I think as it relates to, you know, the emergency repairs, actually I think that's where we started originally, probably back in the fall, I think. Glenn, I don't know if you remember, you know, we did that, some of that research because there is, we found provisions and talked about changing the bylaw to allow for emergency repairs. But Glenn, I knew you were kind of leading that, that research, but.
We searched through these bylaws and searched through the bylaws. Thank you. And I couldn't find a provision, nor could I find one for Mr. Troy to look at that gave the board of selectmen this kind of authority. Matter of fact, we did reach out to town council on this. He recommended going back to town meeting, amending the bylaw to give you the authorization. And I agree with what you hear, the sentiment here. This isn't just really filling potholes, this is a dangerous situation, you know, and this is a, this is a place where I think the town has to step in and say, either the road is going to be fixed or we're going to stop providing services. I mean, it is to that level. So, you know, I think we, it's something we have to work on in the fall. In the meantime, this is what we found with our existing bylaws that allows, gives us the authorization to do this. Because right now, in consultation with council, we are not allowed to step in and spend public funds on a private, unacceptable road.
Could, we need clarification on that because there's also, if the, if the town allows, doesn't take its responsibility for making sure that roads are open to public access and used for public safety, if we don't make sure that it's safe for public safety to get there, that also creates another thing. So I really need to get a public, something from town council that really answers the question as to whether we're prevented by this bylaw for making emergency repairs.
All right, we'll get it in writing.
Yeah. Julie?
Yeah, I don't want to keep pushing this down the road. I mean, I think that this is a solution that can move forward, at least keeping it, you know, having a timeline. Because, well, as I said, there hadn't been any type of, you know, justification to be able to do, spend town money on the emergency roads. I mean, there was a lot of discussion that we had in the background. So that'll, you know, I guess we can get that information very quickly. But I appreciate seeing the plan of action and in stages for the most urgent. There are more and more big water events and they seem to come in big amounts. So when it goes down to the ravine, does it go, is there any public water, area land that's beyond like downstream from that ravine? It doesn't. So would it, does it create a pond there in their, like in their property that they'll start being concerned about?
No, we, we looked at that after the last rain event and it goes right into the ground. There's plenty of bushes in there and leaves, so it gets soft up pretty quickly. It doesn't go into the, anybody's yard.
Yeah.
So it's almost like it was made for that reason. And if I may, you know, Tony and Glenn and I, we did hash this around. And one of the things we are waiting for is a letter from the person that runs that committee over there on Howard Ave. And they are willing to do a cash deposit. In other words, we come up with a figure, I said six grand, you go and do the temporary repairs, they're going to pay for it. So, I mean, also in the bylaw, it says, you know, necessity, that if the town feels necessary to step in, I think we have some avenues to take.
Yeah, so I think what we'll probably, you know, we'll kind of start running in parallel right now because we want to keep this effort going because we don't have the answer on the other thing. We'll get the answer on the other thing.
Right.
And if the answer is no, we need to prepare for a town meeting in the fall with a bylaw change because this won't be the last Howard Ave in Born. So, you know, I think you mentioned nineteen seventy-eight or something when this was created. So, you know, it just brings up a bigger issue of a lot of our bylaws that are, you know, very old, obviously appropriate for the time, but it's a big effort to go through and review all those. But I think it's important that we begin to start, you know, going through these things and bringing them up to twenty, you know, twenty-first century reality of what the town is today versus, you know, thirty or forty years ago. So we'll work with town council, get a written opinion just to. So, we'll work with town council, get a written opinion just to, you know, satisfy, you know, whether we can or can't, and then that'll derive other decisions, but we'll continue to go down this path, because we still need to get concurrence, you know, from the residents, and, you know, we can bring it back in perhaps, you know, with the chair's concurrence in two weeks if we have answers on those, you know, two questions by then.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I think this is, I really applaud you for, for actually drilling down to the, the core problem here, because, you know, it's, it's not just a, a safety problem that has been brought up, but it's, well, it's a health safety also. And I've, I live close to that area, and I, I drive by there, and I'm thinking at the end of a drought summer, there's still, at, at the best, it's, it's like a, not a wetland, but a, a vernal pool. That's, that's on the best day, and it's, you know, as soon as it starts raining, it's horrible, and it's just have that standing water. And it also gets to the pride that the folks have in their neighborhood. And I think this would be a real, this would spur that on, you know, a driving force, because once that happens, I think people don't feel so despondent. They, they said, this is the, the world's longest cul-de-sac, I don't know what you want to call it, but it's, it's, it has to be dealt with, and whatever means possible, as long as it's legal. I think we, we've got to move forward on this quickly.
One thing, when, when Tony brought it up, the bylaw was put in place in 1978, that's when these roads were brand new. We're going back some time. Nothing's been done ever to them, so anyways, I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
So, so, I'm a little bit concerned about process. So, we've seen on these private road things that it's a tremendous amount of work for the neighborhood to get signatures or agreements, and it's only one per house, and it's a tremendous amount of legwork. And then for them to do it for $6,000, and then for them to do it again for the betterment, I think it, it, it's a lot to ask, and then are we going to ever accept their road if they do it to the standards, are they going to accept the road? So, I think there's a lot of questions that we're going to have to look at, but when you do a betterment, you apportion it, there's a formula that Tim Leyden uses to apportion it, and so, we've never done a cash deposit before, we've always done a betterment. And so, now we're creating a new system for making a cash deposit. Who's going to collect the money? Where's it going to go? What if it doesn't cost $6,000? What? So, I'm just thinking process, and this is, it's new territory, and it's great to have the discussion about doing it and having a way to do it.
You've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, and my feeling is it's legal for us to do it, and as a matter of fact, we have an obligation to do it, and not necessarily in a sense of emergency require the residents to go through a lot to pay for it. So, I, I think that's the clarification that I, that I have, is that the town's obligation to fix the really dangerous things that are happening, and so, I, I would like to have some follow-up, you know, on detail for, at the next meeting.
Excuse me, sorry. Fluffing your face, sorry. When, and I, maybe I should know this, but when new developments are, are created, is there an expectation on when the, they repair their roads, and is that built into the planning at all? I, I don't get the impression that it is...
Is what into the planning?
The, the replacement of the roads, the maintenance of the roads, you know, on the newer, say it's a new development that's being put into place and it's unaccepted roads.
When you do a, defend a subdivision, plant a record for a new subdivision, it's up to the developer or the applicant at the time, if they want to keep the fee in the road for themselves, if they want to create a homeowners association, or do the homeowners own out to the center of each, of the road to pay for it, and so, that's at the time of the permitting process with the planning board. Now, as far as maintenance afterwards, it all depends of a homeowners association, is, you know, it's not like you're going to say, you're going to create, and as part of this approval, we're going to require you to put a bond or create us, an escrow account in order to pay for this all, because you don't know who's going to retain the ownership of it. You know, so it all depends on how it's structured way back in the days of when you, when the, when the planning board was holding that public hearing.
I'm thinking at this point forward.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, that's the plan, yes, George.
So, I couldn't, Sean, do you remember the last road we've actually accepted in the town? It's been a number of years.
The Orange One Drive.
Yeah, I, I don't know why, like, we haven't really had any discussions with developers to find out why, you know, if the subdivision comes forward, if the subdivision's being built. I, I actually don't know how many subdivisions we're actually building these days. You know, land becomes more and more scarce. So, we'd have to do a little bit of research, you know, to find out what is the impediment to actually have that road accepted, but again, we haven't accepted one for our, I can't remember, what is it, 30 years now? I mean, it's been incredible.
Almost 30 years.
So, we have to find out what's going on.
I think the difficult equation is it relates to, you know, whether the town would accept the road later. Unfortunately, you know, our form of government, there's no guarantees, so, you know, they have to go through the betterment process, do the reconstruction of the road, then they'd have to come before the board for a road layout hearing, would have to get on town meeting warrant, and town meeting decides whether the town accepts it or not. So, it's, it's that chicken and the egg thing, you know, because you really can't make a guarantee to somebody if they're going to spend 40, 50, $60,000 to, you know, completely reconstruct the road. You can't guarantee them that it's going to be accepted by the town when they're done. It just doesn't work that way. So, that's probably one of the, the challenges, because they're like, well, if we put all this money in, then, you know, we want you guys to maintain it, but that process, you know, it just requires us to, you know, go to town meeting and, you know, get voted on. So, yeah, because we haven't accepted a road for, you know, since 1995, there's a lot of them, and, you know, we've got to be thoughtful so that we don't, you know, sort of get overwhelmed all of a sudden that we can't live up to our commitment to, you know, maintain the roads we do have as accepted roads, so. But we figured we'd start here with this one, it's one of the, you know, it's sort of a test case, and, you know, see how it goes. Obviously, we can, you know, look into how the money's collected and all of that. It's a fairly simple one, because it's, it's fairly inexpensive. So, you know, when you get into larger betterments, when you're talking tens of thousands of dollars, and, you know, that allocation formula, you know, becomes, you know, probably more of a, of a player maybe in, in some of those, but I guess you have to kind of look at each case as it, as it comes, but...
I think it's appropriate just for, just to make the motion, and then what we'll do is if it, if it, if it looks like after the motion's made, the town council comes back and tells us that it's not enforceable, then we'll figure out what our next step is, but I think it's appropriate to go with the motion that's being created at this point.
I think a motion to allow various roadway improvements to occur on Howard Avenue, such as, but not limited to, filling potholes and drainage improvements. As required, the cost of such repairs shall not commence unless the repairs are paid by the butters, by a cash deposit, as allowed under Town Bylaw Section 3.1.28.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, auditors in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I just have it.
Obstand.
Okay, 401.
Can I make, ask one question? Could we have provided to us a copy of the subdivision plan for Howard Avenue? Because I believe there was a retention pond in the subdivision plan, and we should know what that was.
Who knows if even exists, you know, it might, Tim Leyden may have it up there, but I think there's some points that when they did the addition upstairs, they went missing.
Well, if there is one, on file.
I think we do have one.
I'm going to ask the board for some flexibility in the remainder of the agenda, because two of the items under selection's business are going to be easements related. They're in the audience, I wonder if we can take these two easements up top so we can get them done, if that's okay?
Agreed.
Sure.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda will be, I'm looking for the, the National Marine Life Center, there it is, discussion impossible vote on extending the amendment of the National Marine Life Center lease.
Tennessee.
So, we have representatives fund Marine Life Center here. Gene Curry is the, one member of the board of directors, as well as their unofficial attorney.
Actually, I'm not on the board of directors, but I am their official attorney.
All right, so we're now opposite. I knew at one time you were, but you're representing them, so please.
Yes, and, and I'm also resident of Greg Ames, and we appreciate the board taking this issue up, and appreciate your consideration. I'd also like to just divert for a moment and introduce, we have a new executive director that I don't think the board has met, Connie Mur... When they move around, it's really hard. Connie Marigo. Connie has over 30 years of experience in conservation research, in marine mammal and sea turtle rehabilitation and rescue. She's been in numerous leadership positions. She's a former science advisor to the National Marine Life Center, as well as a former board member, and I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to her. I'm sure you will be seeing her again, and we're available to answer any questions that you might have.
Tony? So, just briefly, as the board's aware, the amendment to their main lease is expiring on August 27, 2021, so we wanted to bring it before the board ahead of that expiration date. It was put into effect, I believe, in 2019, and had to do with, I believe, parking in the, you know, the town-owned lot behind the Marine Life Center. So, obviously, if the board has any questions about whether they want to renew the amendment to the lease for another three years, or consider any changes or ask any questions, we can obviously get it written up and ready for the board's approval, should it desire to redo the amendment.
I have no issue with extending this lease out. I mean, I think it's fine the way it is, and if what we can do to keep that organization flourish, we need to do it. Board members? Anybody have any suggestions or any questions about the lease? Is there a motion?
Okay, motion to direct the town administrator to work with town council on extending the National Marine Life Center lease agreement amendment dated August 27, 2019, and expiring on August 27, 2021, for a period of three years from August 28, 2021 to August 27, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? From the audience? Saying none, auditors in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Excitementous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda will be 10F, discussion impossible vote on renewing the historical society's lease of the Bourne Historical Society located at 30 Keene Street, Bourne, Mass. There were two leases, proposed leases that are before you this evening. One is for one five-year lease, and the other one is for a 30-year lease, and the way the 30-year lease would, would work is after, at, it would be, after five years, there'll be options in your 10, 15, 20, 25, that would automatically renew. There's a, there's a, like here, there's a, have you all received the, the information on this draft lease? And basically, to have and to hold the, the premises on the tenant for the term that's set forth in Section 2.1 immediately following the commencement of the term hereof 2.2. The term hereof shall commence July 1, 2021, and the term hereof shall end on the last day of the 60th month, exclusive of such partial month, if only after such commencement, tenant shall have the right to re, have the right to request five extensions, each for a period of five years, and the tenant's request shall not be unreasonably denied by the landlord unless there are material changes in the demised premises, or the landlord needs to utilize the demised premises for purposes of municipal government by the town of Bourne. The reason why there's two leases, there's two in it, because it seems like every five years, you're bringing them back, you bring them back in. The only tenant in that building right now is the Bourne Historical Society, so maybe just for efficiency, it would make it best to consider doing the 30-year lease with the five-year options, you know, given, you know, so it's just, you know, so this way, it's, it's more efficient in when it comes back before the board every five years, and at the same time, at the end of every five years, you can walk around with the town administrator and be like, these are things we may see as problems, how, you know, and, or, you know, in general. You know, it's just, but I will leave it to the board, but Diane, and we'll go with Tony first, and then we'll go with Diane as representative.
Yeah, no, I, I think it makes sense. I think the other thing, in addition to efficiency, because they would still have to let us know they want to renew, but it helps to signal the town's commitment to the historical society, you know, you know, long-term, you know, residency in the, in the building, but at the same time, allows the town every five years to take a look at the building, see how things, you know, are the windows leaking, and, you know, is the building still in a suitable condition for the purpose for which it's being used? So, I think it's good for the town, it's good for the historical society, and I think just good overall for, for everybody, that, you know, we have a, a long-term commitment with the opportunity to at least, you know, assess the building on a fairly routine, you know, basis. So, we're starting to track these. I think Diane, I think the actual, the lease you currently have expired, I think in 2019, is that right? Yeah, so, I mean, you know, it expired before I even got here, and so, we've instituted a system to start tracking these things, so that, you know, you, you know, they've been without a lease for a year, and so, actually, two, almost two years now. So, we've established a system to better track those type of things, so we don't have that happen again.
So, Diane, do you have anything to add as representative of the historical society?
Well, it would be nice if we did have the option for the 30 years, and every five years, looking at it and renewing it. That would work very well for us.
You know, with the way it is, is after five years, the tenant has the right to exercise the option, so then the historical society notifies the town administrator with to extend, and then at that time, if the town wants to take it back for a municipal purpose, that's the time they would do it.
Right.
Or if, you know, with the town administrator has, you know, so, yeah, you would have the option, and then, and then you would have the option of extending out, and then the town, on, the town administrator decides, you know, if he wants to or not, and if he doesn't want to extend it out, then he's going to come before the board and explain why.
I think that would work fine.
Anything for the board? Is there a motion?
I have a question about when, so, does it pick up at 2019 and 30 years from then, or are we doing it from today?
I think we do it from today.
Excellent, just clarify.
I think we have it set up for one July.
For one July, yeah.
For what?
One July.
Okay. So, I could make a motion to approve the lease between the town of Bourne and Bourne Historical Society Incorporated, Massachusetts, nonprofit corporation for the building located at 30 Keene Street, Bourne, Massachusetts, known as the Archives Building, for a period of 30 years from July 1, 2021, to plus 30.
June 30, 2024.
2025, 51.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, auditors in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oppose? Extensions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, we're back on 10A, discussion impossible vote of the special town meeting date. Mr. Town Administrator?
So, you know, there used to be a saying, right, that, you know, after a town meeting in the, in the spring, and everybody gets to take a deep breath. It doesn't really work that way. You know, we're obviously in the process of closing the books for FY '21, but also to start the planning for the fall special town meeting, and so, I've put a series of calendars in your packet to sort of outline the timeline. It's very similar to what we did last year, which I think was very effective in terms of, you know, the types of decisions we want to make at that fall town meeting and the timing of that. So, the proposal is to have the special town meeting on Monday, November 15. I've checked with town, town clerk, the town moderator, those dates work for them, and then basically now start backing up and determining when do we look to begin the process to open the town meeting warrant, which I know we're going to get on the next, next agenda item, but, but that's the proposal right now. There are a couple of things that we're working for that special town meeting, one being the energy performance contract, the other one is, we're just approaching finalization of the MOU with the potential solar project with NextGrid that will be coming to the board here shortly in executive session to go over the details of that. So, the timing we need for that, again, to me, November is a, is an excellent time to have a fall town meeting for, for a number of... So the timing we need for that, again, to me, November is, is an excellent time to have a fall town meeting for, for a number of different reasons. But, so that's the proposal, November fifteenth, which is Monday.
Is there a re, I mean, this is the latest I've ever seen.
It was the sixteenth last year.
I know, but still. I mean, fifteen, sixteenth, the day, the year before, but before that, they were usually in mid to late October. You know, I just didn't know what COVID.
Well, again, from an administrator's standpoint, November's a great time to do it. It gives you flexibility, one, to make sure you get your free cash certified. Now, you know, we have a great process, right? I mean, we were, I think, in the top ten communities, got their free cash certified last year. But that doesn't always happen, right? So, I mean, so when you start lining up the things that need to occur and all the work that needs to go into town meeting, if you put it in October, we needed to start today to be able to do a credible job. And, but we also have time, not time-sensitive, but the two things I mentioned to you just a minute ago, if the town meeting is in October, those will not happen because we just don't have the time to put those things in place. And so, you know, for me as an administrator, when I look at holding town meeting, is I look at, okay, what are the, you know, what's the universe of things that we are going to want to have town meeting vote on? And a lot of times, some of those will drive the timing of when you actually have your special town meeting. So obviously, I'm not going to be here then, but whatever the board, you know, decides, you know, we'll work with. It's up, up to you, but I just, you know, my experience in doing them in November, it's a much more relaxed process in getting us there because, you know, we're starting in, you know, the August timeframe through the end of September. If you back it up a month, right, to mid-October, we're, we're, we're behind. Because we're, we, we'll be closing out the books for FY twenty-one into mid-July. So, I mean, a lot of the things that we're doing right now are not related to town meeting, but as soon as the books are closed in mid-July, we're, you know, people need to take some time off, there's, you know, all of that. And then we need to jump right into, you know, starting to create a, a workable, incredible product for, for town meeting. So it certainly has the pleasure of the board to decide when to have it. But, you know, my input is, you know, mid-November is, is a excellent time to do it, but that's just my opinion.
My question, after that, we go to town meeting in mid-November now. After that, department heads are going to start presenting their next yearly budgets to you. You know, or you give them direction of what their budgets are going to be, you know, you know, level service or level funded.
So that's going to start in September. So again, there's a lot of concurrent things that go on. And so we try to space them out so we have an opportunity because there's always, there's never a time where you're only focused on one thing, right? So we released the initial budget instructions in September last year. And so we're looking to provide the prior year financial review, probably in October, not in December. We're, we're developing a better process to put these things in, in proper timeframes. And so we'll be looking to provide the prior year financial review, actually, in, in October, not in, you know, not in December. So we're reorganizing to, again, to spread out the amount of work that we have to do for all of these different, you know, types of activity. And, you know, we're going to start with, you know, meeting on capital stuff, you know, if there's going to be, you know, a, I won't necessarily say an out-of-cycle, but there's some, you know, discussion about whether there's a couple of capital items we may want to bring to the fall town meeting. Well, it's going to take time to put those together, meet with the capital committee, meet with the board, right, get everybody's concurrence on that. So again, I just, you know, the, where we have our stuff set up, it, to me, it makes, it makes, you know, better sense. Now, some towns have their town meeting in March and April. And so, you know, the timing of that, they, they may shift and do an earlier fall town meeting. But with ours in May, it helps to spread out the amount of, you know, work that, that, you know, needs to happen within, you know, town hall and the, in the department. So, but again, it's, you know, it's totally up to the board. We'll deal with whatever cards are dealt. But I think it makes it a lot more manageable and frankly, a better product. One of the things with the way, you know, we operate versus, you know, town council forms of government is timing really becomes important because you could, you only meet twice a year. And so if you miss an opportunity in the fall for something, you know, really that could provide a, a, a great benefit to the town, like an energy performance contract or the NextGrid project, now you've got to wait, you know, six months. And sometimes those folks aren't around then, or they move on to something else and you lose an opportunity. So I, again, I, you know, think that when you consider all of those different factors, you know, that mid-November, you know, timeframe for a town meeting is, I think, it really provides a better opportunity for the town to take advantage of, you know, certain things. But, yeah, that's just me.
The board does, any, any board discussion on this?
Just.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I would support this mid-November date, it's the fifteenth or sixteenth?
Fifteenth.
Yeah. But I'd also, with the proviso, that any, oh, I guess this is once, it would go to Barry Johnson, not that he's the authority, but he seems to know all the deadlines that we would have to be created from that November fifteenth date. And we would also have to have a good idea of the, the agenda items that would be tuned into those deadlines. Like a, if there's a bylaw change or something like that, that would be very helpful to know that. So we can push, you know, having that little, those couple extra weeks that we traditionally have, we have that now and it'd be good to be able to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
So my original concern was, starting in mid-November, if you wait to start capital and you wait to start things until after the special town meeting in the fall, then that pushes everything up like really tight for being prepared for the budget presentation in mid-January. So it would be helpful to know if, if some of those discussions around capital and budget are going to start in September and not start after the town meeting. I think that's better. I think the other thing that we don't know right now is, because we haven't discussed it as a board, is what's our plan for hiring a town administrator and how is that going to fit into the schedule? You know, having some sort of an idea of what our hiring process is and what's going to happen when and what's going to be done early and what's going to be done late. So I, I think that's a discussion we have to really prioritize as a board, like how we're going to deal with that situation. So I, I would lean probably more to early November, but I can see because, and I just want to be careful about how we lay, how it works out into the intermediate dates for coordinating with finance committee and Boris Leckman and other things and charter review because the charter review, I think, is planning on coming this fall, so there's, there's a lot. So I would have been inclined to go more towards November first, but I could see reasons for having it be November fifteenth as well, so.
I definitely, you know, support the November fifteenth because of the reasons of things working simultaneously. And it is a, you know, kind of a rhythm that can work out well both for the long term, you know, for the spring and then also for the fall town meeting. I think that, you know, whenever we can buy ourselves more time to be more prepared, I think that that's, that's a good way to go. And if November fifteenth is not too late, then I think we go with not, November fifteenth. I'd be willing to make a motion to select November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as the date for the fall special town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Say in none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extensions? Ayes, ayes, unanimous. Next in on the agenda is discussion and possible vote on dates of opening and closing the fall town, special town meeting warrant.
Yeah, it's supposed to be the ninth. Yep. So again, I, you know, I utilized the, the timeline and the process that we built last year, which again, you know, provided enough time for not just the, the staff, but if there are selectmen, town meeting warrant articles are certainly from other boards and committees, CPA, gives them adequate time. Because what we, what we do now is when that warrant closes, it's not, you know, there's no, it's, the warrant article is created and it's in the form, frankly, that will be, you know, more or less once, until town council reviews it, of what will end up in the warrant. And again, that's worked well because I think, you know, the work that we put into three town meetings now, I think, has shown the fruits of that effort to not get into the, the circling cyclone that can happen when you're running around because people haven't finalized articles, motions, or whatever. So that, again, when we go to town meeting, we're providing them with a professional product, a professional meeting, one that they can clearly follow, things are in the order that they're supposed to be in. And so the thought would be to open the town meeting warrant on the ninth of August and then have that warrant article close on the twenty-fifth of September, which again, would give us several weeks to take those final warrant articles. The motions we get at the same time, we kind of put them off to the side for a little bit of time. So the, because the board really wants to focus, as we've done in the past, on the, on the warrant articles that'll end up getting posted. And so you would start looking at those on the fifth of October, so a couple of weeks after that. And then, as we know with town meeting, we tend to maybe meet a, a meeting or two more so that the board can ask questions, revise and review the remaining ones and then look to vote to post the warrant on the nineteenth of October to get it out in the appropriate places by the twenty-second of October. And then literally within about a week, you know, we would be working to finalize, probably about two weeks finalize the, the town meeting handbook. And again, that's part of the commitment to get that out in sufficient time for residents to prepare themselves, read up on things so that they can at least come to town meeting with the opportunity to be best prepared as they can be for important decisions that we're, you know, asking them to, you know, to make. So, so that's the, the rest of that timeline. So we'd look to publish the voter handbook around the fifth of November, which would give them probably about ten days or so to, you know, do the review prior to town meeting.
Anybody else? Anybody have anything on this?
And I said the twenty-fifth of September, it's actually the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Oh, it is.
So you also said the ninth of August.
Ninth of.
And it's the ninth.
There, there's a typo on it.
There is a typo, okay. So the ninth is correct and the twenty-fourth is correct.
Correct.
So we'd make a motion to open the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one special town meeting warrant on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extensions? It's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to close the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one special town meeting warrant on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Say in none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extensions? It's unanimous. Next in on the agenda, thank you, Sean, for staying late.
Thank you, Sean.
Discussion and possible vote on submitting a letter to DEP related to the town's intent to address the water mitigation strategies. Tony?
So I think, as you're all aware, we're waiting anxiously on the decision on the request from the Buzzard Bay Water District to mask DEP for an increase in the water withdrawal permit. That would, you know, release the, the hold, if you will, on new water connections, particularly for larger developments. So that process has gone a little bit back and forth. Remember back in, I think it was either January or February, they got a letter from DEP for an incomplete application. We supplied more information, the MMA did as well, that was resubmitted. And then in late May, right before Memorial Day, they received some kind of communication from DEP. We have the Buzzard Bay Water District letter, but essentially DEP is telling them, look, you know, the way I read it, chances are good you're going to get, you know, an increase above the baseline that was done back in two thousand and five. But we want to hear from you about what mitigation strategies you plan on, you know, implementing and putting in a mitigation plan to sort of help offset the fact that we're giving you this, you know, increased withdrawal permit. And so what they're looking for from the town and from the board of selectmen is essentially a letter of commitment that we will work with the Buzzard Bay Water District in the creation of that mitigation plan. And if you look through some of the things that they highlighted in there that they'll be looking for, you know, support for the town on, one of those has to do with, you know, you know, what, you know, what lands has the town taken possession of for conservation purposes? Because when you're taking large tracts of land that cuts down on development and things like that. And so certainly, I think we should work with them in this, in this effort because, you know, the benefit pact to the town to get this is going to be significant for economic development and growth in the Buzzard Bay area. So at this point, it's just, you know, really for the board to decide whether they, you know, want to sign on to that. And we can craft a very short letter back to them saying that we will be happy to work with you. We'll be set, you know, we would set up a meeting with them, with some of the staff that would be, you know, instrumental in that because we already have a number of things that we're working that I think would fit very nicely into their mitigation plan to show DEP, you know, our commitment to, you know, some of the areas that you saw listed in their particular letter. So I think it would be a good, good thing for the town to, to work with the, with the district on.
Definitely, because they've been asking for the town's support for years and Tom wasn't so willing at times. So now the fact that we're doing this, I think the Buzzard Bay Water District will appreciate it very much. What's the pleasure of the board? Yes?
I, I think this is really important for us to do. And I also think that some of the things that they talk about in terms of wastewater and recharge and stormwater, you know, but the recharge, as we go through our comprehensive wastewater plan, we should be talking about that. And that's one of the things that we should be thinking about in terms of, you know, how we structure our, our wastewater because we want to make sure that we do it in ways that are going to get us the water we need to have as wastewater.
Yeah, and, you know, as you know, we're working on phase two of our SNAP project, right? And so part of that is, you know, sort of the resiliency, infrastructure part of this and how do you finance, you know, those type of things. But what we've decided is we've looked through the projects that we would look to regret. Many of them are surrounding stormwater and how you deal with stormwater. So a lot of the things that we're working are all starting to sort of gel together in able to support multiple initiatives that have surrounding, you know, wastewater, water quality, stormwater, MS four. You know, we, if you saw on there, you know, we just finished an I and I study, which we'll provide to the sewer commissioners because they're looking at ways to take I and I out of the system and things like that. So all of these things we've been working on, not necessarily in silos, but they're all starting to, to really melt together in a lot of different areas. And so, and decisions we're making are having positive effects and other things that we're working on. And so I think what that ends up showing you is that, you know, as you try to address one issue, there's other side benefits that those projects and things can actually help to address in other things that you're working. And it just, it starts to coordinate, I think, all those, you know, types of efforts. So I think it's a, it's a good thing for us to do this. And again, with all the different initiatives we have going on, I think we'll, we'll see them all start to, you know, sort of tie into a night, you know, neat bundle.
Anybody else?
I could make a motion to direct the town administrator to write a letter of commitment to participate in the development of the Buzzard's Bay Water District's mitigation plan as required by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extensions? It's unanimous. Next in on the agenda will be committee appoint discussion and possible vote of selectmen committee appointments. We have a spreadsheet that's in our packet. I'll read them one by one and we'll just take them individually.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, one second. Just for a second, I know that this was done kind of, you know, as you, being reappointed is quite a bit different than being appointed. But I think there were some assumptions that were made, even with me, as we work our way out of COVID. And I call your attention to a, a, just, a couple of weeks ago, I was able to attend three Zoom meetings in the late afternoon. One which would have been at here, in, in this building, another one in Barnstable Village, and the third one back here. And I, I realize there are hybrid opportunities, but I am, I just, by count here, I have about sixty addition, you know, meetings that I have to attend because of the Assembly of Delegates now also, which is twice a month. And I would be very happy to.
Give up.
To give up at least the road acceptance committee reappointment. Even though I, roads are near and dear to my heart and I appreciate me, my being considered. are near and dear to my heart and I appreciate my being considered. I would, I just see there's going to be more conflicts coming down the
Well, let's, let's go down the list one at a time. We'll just take it as it goes. But thank you for doing what you've done over the years on those.
Well, I'm looking for a pat on the back, but I just, really, it's funny. We did this before, but with the, I think the delegate, Assembly of Delegates equation in there, that's, that's changed things a little bit. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the Affordable Housing Trust, I am your appointee to that, and I wish to stay on with that. And that term expires on June 30th, 2023. We haven't been too busy here, but now with Capeview Way being, you know, being a big discussion point right now, the Affordable Housing Master Plan, which will be dealt, will be with the housing partnership as well, as well as our mission to always promote affordable housing in the town with Carrie Harmon, Sue Ross, and the rest of the committee, you know, I guess we'd like to stay. So.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Peter J. Meyer to the Affordable Housing Trust for the term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Orders in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extensions? Okay. Bourne Landfall Business Model Working Group, it listed as Judy, but I thought Jared was our representative to that.
That is correct. And I will gladly do that again.
Some J word.
So is there a motion to appoint Jared to, as our representative term?
Yep. Motion to reappoint Jared McDonald to the Landfall Business Model Working Group with a term to expire on June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Orders in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Extensions? It's unanimous. Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board, Mr. Potter was the former representative. So that is now opened, which one of you, I am not interested. So which of the four remain in?
I am very interested.
Anybody else?
Well, I would say, I think it's helpful to have staff on that. You know, like I know that in Sandwich, the town administrator is on that committee. So that's what made me think of that as a, as a possibility because then there's a continuity there and, and connection to the people who are doing the work.
We had a member on there before, you know, in the exception, and we had no problem with it. So in my opinion, if a member wants to serve, I always defer to a member first. So, yeah, I mean, if someone wants to, I mean, I only hear MJ, but if they want to nominate a staff member, then put them both in nomination and decide which one. So what's the position?
Well, I mean, I, I, some of what I observed and listened to that Jim brought back to the table, it just seemed like it was more, it would be more efficient to have it be, you know, staff who's very involved with the detail work and the day-to-day operations of how to get the money and how to connect up and that type of thing. So.
So, can, can I?
Yeah.
So I've been attending these meetings as a member of the public and the committee, the board itself is, is a mixture of Board of Selectmen. So on the board, the requirement is it's either a Board of Selectmen member or a town administrator. So that's the, that's the rules of the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. So the fund itself, the management fund, doesn't really do a lot in terms of how the money is distributed. The money is, the money goes directly to DEP and DEP does it based on the, based on the SRF process because that's how you get the money. And they, the way that they did the process was to make the management board not be making a lot of decisions about the projects and which projects were done. They made a very streamlined process. I think it's very important this year to have a member of the Board of Selectmen who can make a real case for the needs of Bourne in terms of warding and getting things done and can work with other members of Andrew Gottlieb, who's on that management board and is very active in wastewater and is a real driving force on the board. So I would really like to be able to do this. And I think that if, there's no reason that Glenn couldn't attend the meetings. I think that if a member of staff attends the meetings, then they have an official capacity. I think if, if a Board of Selectmen member is not a member of the board and then affects, you know, sort of attends the meetings, they have less of an official capacity. So I think it'd be actually really good if you could have a Board of Selectmen member appointed as the management board member and then to have staff attend the meetings as well when it's in their schedule.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
If I could make just a quick comment before the, yeah, the important thing is if, whatever we decide on, it would be beneficial to the town of Bourne to have a collaborative effort. And it really doesn't matter to me. I think because of the information that's being disseminated is, it's really key to us. I think, I don't really have a horse in this show, but it basically, I think it would, I think we should probably go with the, you know, the select board member. And I'm not, I can make the motion or whatever, but I think, because Glenn has a good, you know, an engineering background.
I know. That's why I was thinking, I'm like, wow.
But to have two people, and I think it also shows the rest of the Cape that the town of Bourne is very serious about things like wastewater because we are the host community, so to speak, with a lot of wastewater issues. And if we have two talented people that were showing the rest of the Cape, that speaks well for us, I think.
Yeah. Just so, just in terms of breakdown. So, you know, there's 15 towns, right, as part of the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. So if you consider Bourne doesn't have somebody on it right now, there's 14. So right now, nine of the 14 are staff, right? But you have a mixture of town managers and administrators, an assistant town manager, a director of public works, Chatham appointed their health and natural resources director. So there's, and then you have Board of Selectmen member like Mr. Gottlieb and some others. So it's a real mix. I don't, you know, I don't, I hadn't attended any meetings. I don't know, you know, how towns decided who they ended up, you know, appointing for those type of things. But there really is a mix in that right now, but it's more slated towards staff for whatever reason. But obviously each town makes their own decisions about how they want to, you know, deal with, you know, this particular group. But that's, that's the breakdown. So.
A motion or a nomination, which way does the board want to do?
Like I said, one statement be, you know, and I could make the motion or you can send it for further comments. But just, I mean, I do have a concern with Glenn, not, not with his talent, but because of his looming schedule. These could be daunting months ahead for Glenn for many other reasons. I don't know what the reasons are because we haven't really decided. We could be putting Glenn in a, you know, a difficult position. But if he, you know, if he's an extra person that has time to go to these and add input and there is a truly collaborative effort here, I say we can't lose. But I mean, I would be in favor of moving forward with Mary Jane's name. If I can do that now or for further discussion, I don't want to make any assumptions.
Anybody else have anything?
Glenn, what do you think?
Well, I think I would probably want to defer to a member of the board if the one member of the board wanted to step up. I simply put my name in. I can tell you now as, as a staff member who wants to participate in these things. I think it is important for the region. I do know also with Mr. Potter, the board originally wanted to meet during the day. He found that very difficult. I think he persuaded them to meet it as late in the afternoon as possible. It might've been four o'clock, most of their meetings were. So again, I would be happy to defer to a select board member. I simply put my name in. I didn't know if anyone else actually wanted to step up, what it came down to.
Well, and I, Chair, I think my, my biggest impetus on this is to make sure that there is an absolute exchange of information that, you know, can't be working independently.
Do you have a motion?
Okay. I would make a motion to appoint Mary Jane Mistrangelo to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board with a term to expire on June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Orders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Any extensions? Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority is Mr. George. You want to stay on that?
My hairdresser now?
Mr. George.
Well.
Yes, I'd be honored to continue that. I took note that the, it expires at the end of the fiscal year, which is good, in line with everybody else.
So motion to reappoint George G. Slade Jr. to the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority with the term to expire on June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Orders in favor?
Aye.
Orders opposed? Extensions? It's unanimous. Community action committee of Cape Cod and the Islands, I mean, a selectman representative, a select board had it in the beginning, I think it was George, and then they moved it, made it more of a human service. It's more human services and someone from the school department was doing it, was serving in their capacity, and now it's vacant. I wonder if a select woman doesn't want to serve, if we should retract out the school department, see if they're, or someone would want to do it.
I would be in favor of that. Like I said, I attended the meetings for about a year and I was really, they were happy to have me there and representing Bourne, but I really think I was out of my league and I was very happy to have attracted a person from the human services, which just didn't work out because that person had to move on. They had to, I think they moved out of the area. But she was very good, too. A lot more qualified than I was.
She was smart. So probably defer action on one of us. Any other board member wants to step up? I don't hear anybody volunteering. So we would defer that. Community Engagement Committee.
That was Jim, wasn't it?
I know. And, all right then, Judy, you can have it.
Well, I don't know. Somebody else might be interested.
Yeah, well, anybody else?
Oh, I would like to follow through on it. So.
All right. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to nominate Judy Froman as the representative to the Committee Engagement Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Seconded.
It says however, I know, you know, it says 24 on the sheet, but then it says selectmen do it annually. So let's make it 2022.
Yeah.
Second.
Orders in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? It's unanimous. The local emergency planning committee, traveling noises committee. George, you've been on that?
Yes. And to be perfectly truthful, I attended my first meeting recently. But it was, actually, it was a very good substantive meeting. I think they're going to be working out of the police department. But it was, you know, it's hurricane season now and it's good to have the, to meet as a group. But I would be willing to carry on.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint George Slade as our member?
Yes. Motion to reappoint George G. Slade Jr. to the Local Emergency Planning Committee for the term ending on June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Orders in favor?
Aye.
Orders opposed? Extensions? It's unanimous. Mass Military Reservation, Military Civilian Community Council, George is our representative and that term expires June 30th, 2022. Do you wish to stay?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint George G. Slade Jr. to the Massachusetts Military Reservation, Military Civilian Community Council for the term ending on June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Orders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Orders opposed? Extensions? It's unanimous. MM, Senior Management or Mass Military Reservation Senior Management, Mr. George?
Yes. And I'd be, I think I should point out, I believe this has formally been merged into the MC3. They'd done that a year or two ago. And I think it gets lost because we forget to announce it at the right time. But I would be willing to just forego this unless there is a clarification, if I'm wrong.
No, you're probably right.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we trust your judgment. And if we have to reappoint you, you know, because it's, then we'll do it. But you say no actions necessary, so we'll just leave it alone.
Okay.
OPEB Trust Fund, I think the enablement act of the trust fund gives the chairman of the Board of Selectmen by right. They don't need to be sworn in or no. So I think the only person we got to nominate is the town administrator as a voting member.
Yeah. So the rationale for that, obviously, since Erica fills two of the positions, it leaves four, which is an even number, not that there's any heavy lifting, you know, required of the board. So, you know, I think the OPEB Trust documents, you know, provide for that. So I think it, you know, would make sense to have the town administrator as, as part of that. And, you know, you end up with five, you know, five members. It's not particularly active. Typically, I think at this point, I'm not sure if they've technically said who the chair is, but you know, when it first started, it was the chair of the Board of Selectmen, at least to start it. But, but again, that's, you know, up to the board if they want the, the town administrator to fill a position on the OPEB Trust.
Is there a motion to nominate Anthony C. Avia as the representative, as a voting member TA?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Yep. And that term will expire on June 20th, June 30th. I'm trying to read.
June 22.
2022.
Yep. Orders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Orders opposed? Eyes have it. Private Roads Acceptance Committee, Mrs. Slade, thank you very much. Your service and you have to ask someone.
Good luck getting it.
So I'd be willing to do this.
All right then. Anybody else? Seeing none. Is there a motion to nominate MJ?
Motion to appoint Mary Jane Mistrangelo as the ex officio non-voting member of the Private Roads Acceptance Committee for the term ending June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Orders in favor?
Aye.
Orders opposed? Extensions? It's unanimous.
I forgot the words here.
The roadway traffic safety committee.
I'd love to be on that.
Anybody else? Aye.
I love signs.
I'll make a motion.
Intersections.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Judith Froman as an ex officio non-voting member to the roadway traffic safety committee for the term ending on June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Orders in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extensions? It's unanimous. Trustees of the community building, it's just, it's by state statute. I don't need to be. Town administrator report.
Nice.
No, 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 no. Town administrator's appointments. The Southside Fire Station, I am your representative to that and I'm appointed until the project is finished or revoked. So that's just a notification. The transportation TA Advisory Committee on Pedestrian Bicycle Pathway is Mrs. Slade.
Yeah. I'd like to continue.
So is there a motion to recommend appointment?
I was going to say recommend.
Yeah. Recommend appointment, reappointment of George to that committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Orders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Orders opposed? Eyes have it. The wastewater, the soil design and building committee, I am your, I am your representative to that and the, I mean, the former chair is down the corner. But Tony can also tell you, we're pretty much at the end. I mean, if you reappoint me, I guess, you know, it may, maybe six months and the committee will be disbanded. Or recommend reappointing me. It'll be six months, it'll be disbanded. In fact, if I remember, I thought that appointment was to, the project was finished. I didn't think there was.
It is. So UPC.
So it's UPC.
Yeah. And the project is completed, so.
Yeah.
I think, I think I'm already on there.
Think that's all of it.
I think I already, those are my appointments, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're already done.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're already done.
Yeah, so now I guess you know, on the list, so.
No, I think this was just a list for you guys. I mean, I think I already, I think Mary had already given me the, because I asked her, are all my reappointments done? She said yes. So, I'll double check.
I think that's just a list of committees.
Yeah.
That wasn't meant, there was no motion for that. It's just a list of committees that would be done.
What does U stand for?
Until project.
Until.
Until project completion.
So now, town administrator's report.
Are we going to do vote or accept gifts?
Gifts.
Oh, yeah, the two thousand bucks or whatever it is. Yep, vote to accept two thousand dollar gift from the Bourne Shelfish Fund, to the Bourne Shelfish Fund, and five hundred to the Rec Department. So who's going to make that motion that we accept this free money?
Motion to accept a donation of a two thousand dollar gift to the Bourne Shelfish Fund.
And?
A motion. As a donation of five hundred dollar gift to the Bourne Recreation Department.
Yep, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. All right, now the town administrator's report.
All right, that was good.
See, it's ten minutes and nine, it works for me. So as most of you know, I think, may have had an opportunity to participate last week, we had two public meetings via Zoom related to the replacement of both the Bourne and Sagamore Bridge. Hosted by Mass Department of Transportation and supported by H and B, the, from the Army Corps of Engineers. The presentation that they went through was either the same or very similar to the one that I think some of you probably participated in the week before. Where they gave the same presentation to various focus groups over the course of about three days, four different groups. Cape Cod Commission, the Chamber, Regional Transit Authorities, and so forth. And then the following week was an opportunity for the public. If you listen on there, there were times on those meetings, there was probably, you know, anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred people that had logged into the webinar. There were some really great questions, but I think, you know, the theme really is, we're still very early in the process. They clearly, I think, have a handle or an understanding of what some of, I'll call them the big rocks to solve are, some of those being obviously funding, the exact design. But I think important for the folks in town, both the business community and the residents, were really about, you know, what are the potential land takings? How is it going to affect some of the businesses that are in close proximity to the, to the bridges? And, you know, how are they going to accommodate, you know, future travel, particularly for folks in Bourne, right? And so although, you know, they mentioned having two lanes that are, I'll call them the flyover, to get people from one side to the other. But also having a third lane that is for the local access that people need, both that live here and travel back and forth. But also people that want to come to Bourne for various goods and services, or to take, you know, part in, you know, activities and what we, what Bourne has to offer. But again, great questions, but again, a lot of it was, you know, early in the process, and they sort of kept hitting on that over and over again, well, it's too early to tell, too early to tell. But if you looked at the timeline, things are going to start to gel pretty, pretty quickly over the course of probably the next year. The funding part of it, we know is critical, right, because we can have all the plans in the world, but if the funding doesn't happen, then obviously that makes a project not, not move forward. So, but again, I think good participation, good questions, and, you know, we'll, we'll see. That's been loaded, or going to be loaded up on their website. Once it is, I looked last week, I couldn't find it. But once the slides are up, there, the recording of the two public meetings, we'll grab that. We have a separate button on our homepage of the website specifically dedicated to the reconstruction of the two bridges. And, you know, as this information is out there, we'll pull it into our website, so it's easy to find for residents that may be looking to, to watch the presentations. Or look at the, you know, the slide deck and things like that. So, don't know what all you thought of it, but that's, you know, sort of my takeaways over the two nights that I listened in on it.
Judy?
I, I know that there were some people who were disappointed that there weren't more, things weren't more solidified. But I have to say, I was really psyched about the participation and the fact that people are participating on the early stages where, you know, opinions still do count. And, you know, you can have those thoughts and that can get into some of the thinking in terms of the planning. So to me, this is, you know, a really good community engagement process, even if it's not formulated. People would be ticked if it was, if everything was already formulated, so, you know, then what could they complain about? But this is, this way, there can be constructive input, so.
Well, and the other thing, too, is, and they hit on this in both, that this was, you know, they, they do things in different ways, right? So most of the stuff that they do is project based, right? This is a project, like the Belmont Rotary Improvement, that's a project. This is a program, and so as they define what that really is, I mean, if you really think about it, I mean, this is a monumental program and project. To think about replacing two bridges over a canal to meet the modern day transportation needs from commerce to residential to commuters to, you know, pedestrians and bicycles. This is huge. And so I think as that becomes, I think people will get the, will get, start to get that about how big this really is, this is not a simple task, so there are a lot of moving parts. So I think, you know, emphasizing that it's a, it's a program with all these different inputs and things that have to gel together to make it a reality are really complex. And it's going to take a lot, including community input and buy-in, and, and good conversations about how this is going to work and make sure that they don't leave anything out. Because who has the best view of the bridges? Bourne does, right? So, you know, we have to make sure they, they hear us loud and clear as they're looking at the planning and the sequencing and traffic and all of that. That are surely going to be a major impact to the community here, so.
With, anyone follow up on you?
I was just also going to say that it, this was leaps and bounds ahead of when the Army Corps gave their presentation. And, and it seemed like things were, you know, this is the way it is, this is a done deal, you know, this is, there's not a lot of flexibility, no, we're not really taking questions. So I think the collaboration of the, you know, the memorandum of understanding has been beneficial to get Mass dot behind it, so.
And I think going forward, I think it is important that we as a community hold our own town hall hearing or meeting when it comes to the issue with the canal area and the Bourne Sagamore Bridge replacement project. You know, bring in the similar state and federal partners that are appropriate, as well as the Cape Cod Commission. And the, and maybe just invite the elected delegation, you know, just to attend. But the thing is, is this is in our community, and I think that it would be nice if we geared more towards what we're looking for. Because, you know, you heard in that meeting last week when they're saying, me down in, down in the lower Cape, I don't want to see any more development. I don't want to see these roads, you know, be any bigger to mean more people going down the Cape. You know, it's not here, not my, not my backyard. And I understand they have their issues with it, but it all, we, we're the ones that are directly affected by it overall, they're in our community. And so I would like to see us hold a town hall type of setting, maybe in September or whenever it's appropriate. You know, just so we can, you know, so we can, our people and our leadership can explain to them what we're looking for. And as a follow up to that, when we go to re-energize the Transportation Advisory Committee, that could be one of their charges, is to, you know, to be, you know, to be working, you know, and, you know, and working with people. And provide information for, you know, to our CCM, MPO rapport, to the appropriate state and federal agencies going forward. So there is that collaboration going. So I guess think that we should have our own meeting as well. I think it's important just for us to have it. George?
I think we just touched upon most of what I was going to say, but, yeah, we are the host community for this. And we do have the opportunity, and I think Judy, you brought this up a couple of years ago when we were, this was starting to ramp up. And we have to have, we're going to be living with the surface, you know, whatever happens. And we, we have to have a good vision of what this is going to look like years from now. In other words, how the Cape is going to change demographically and what's it going to mean to the surface roads leading up to and away from the bridges. So it's good to have a cordial yet forceful relationship with Mass DOT, because they're going to be the, the main party eventually. And I think a lot of people, because this may have been the second or third bite at the apple of listening to the presentation, they're getting that piece of the information solidified in their mind. But also the funding, every, the first words out of their mouths is, we have to wait for the funding, so don't start salivating just yet. But it's good if we have a prominent, like I said, we want to be respectful, because there is the rest of the Cape, it's not just the town of Bourne. But the, we have to come out winners in this, one way or the other. Thank you.
MJ?
Well, the, my biggest takeaway was that we need to communicate how important it is that this project happened. I mean, we really have to say, we, we really need this, we really do need it to happen, because it's, there's such a chokehold on our town without this project. One of the things that I found is if you go into their website, there's a huge document of options and alternatives and things they've considered. And when they start talking about funding, it's like, well, if we have the money to do this, we'll be able to do this, if we don't, we might end up with this. So that kind of education, too, in terms of what are the options and how do we make sure that we get the support that we need to have it done right? So that it's not obsolete when it's built. That's my, you know, so, yeah, we have to be able to leverage whatever thing we can do to get it to happen, so.
Jared?
So I didn't attend the Zoom meeting that night, but I did see a sort of reproduction of it. And I, I just want to reiterate, like Tony said, I think one of the biggest things for us is how it affects us, especially businesses. Any, any further construction that we have, that are properties in that area. And I, I know everybody looks at me, and I live on Sineka Highway, and, you know, it's in my front yard, not my backyard. But I think Sineka Highway especially, there's, there's a lot of land that can still be developed there. And I think we have to be careful that we don't lose all of that. I've said this before, I think there needs to be a zoning change down there, having it village business is difficult. Because you're, you're not really going to put a business in there, because the speeds are so high right now. And I think if they put a barrier down the middle like they're expecting to in twenty twenty-four, that's just going to make all that business and, and development in that area obsolete. And I think that's what's going to end up happening, and it's going to become a raceway across there. And I, I think that's one of the important things we need to look at, is how it's going to affect those properties and developments and businesses and all of those types of things. Because that, that also brings in money to the town, you know, that's tax revenue for us, and that's the majority of our budget. So I just wanted to reiterate, I mean, it's great that they're going to try and have an extra lane on the bridge so that you can access Bourne and our amenities. But if we lose a lot of the amenities, it makes it that much more difficult.
Thank you, Jared.
Sure, I, I do think, you know, the townspeople, everybody should be advised on, they did talk about an advisory group forming in the fall, so make sure we all keep our eyes peeled for that. I think we all want to jump on board that. I think if you do want to have a town hall type, you know, either next spring or maybe early next summer, because that's when they talked about having alternatives. And, you know, and trust me, they're, you know, I've done plenty of these, they're absolutely doing the right thing. You come with a blank slate, you talk to people, you get their ideas, and the same point, it frustrates residents, because you're not showing them ideas for them to look at, you know? But they're doing it the right way, but I think also, you know, that sometime, let's say, next spring, maybe next, next, early next summer, might be a better time for that. When they actually have alternatives that we can look at and have an opinion on, you know? But again, I'd encourage you to look for that advisory group in the fall, make sure you sign up for it, you know, because you want the participation, you definitely do. I mean, it really does matter. And trust me, there were a lot at that meeting, I believe the first time they said there were three hundred and fifty participants, and that's a great number. I'll tell you right now, and that, you know, that, that speaks volumes, so we want to keep that up.
Yeah, I mean, next summer may, maybe for that, at that time, but I think we need to keep the interest going before that. So maybe we limit what we talk about in the fall when we bring them all together, but I just think it's important that we need to be in the forefront, because it is in, in our area. We're the one, we're the leaders, and we're the ones that are going to deal with the phone calls when the traffic starts and, you know, when I can't get to work or my kid can't get to school on time. So at least if we have a working dialogue throughout the, the fall and winter and spring, we'll figure out how, how to do it. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Tony, next thing?
Uh, yep, okay, so we're done with that. Just a couple of personnel updates I wanted to provide to the board. I kind of broke them up into sort of current vacancies and some of the new positions that came out of a town meeting. So for the police chief, though, the special legislation was filed on the tenth of June at the House, and was referred to the Committee on Public Service. On the fifteenth of June, it was concurred on by the Senate, so obviously there's still a couple more steps to go through to finalize that. Kind of some of the stuff that I'm working on right now is just putting some ideas together about the community survey and the department survey. That I think I may have talked about at a town meeting. Again, just to start to collect some of the public input on what folks are thinking about, you know, the, the qualities and characteristics and all that sort of thing. As it relates to the next, you know, leader in our, our police department, and probably that'll be about as far as I get. So in terms of the process, I have talked to Chief Shastany about this a little bit. There's kind of two ways to do it. You can do the traditional one, like we did with the fire department, the civil service thing doesn't really matter. But, you know, you hire a firm such as Badge Quest or some of the other ones that are, that are out there to do a traditional assessment center. But there's also been a little bit of a move on the police side anyways to, for the town to develop its own assessment center. Bringing in very well-respected, renowned police leaders from around the country to form our own assessment center. In other words, we pick the folks that are actually the core of that assessment center. That would then take the group of applicants and how that process sort of funnels out the finalists. That would then go before the assessment center to then make a recommendation on, on the finalists. So something for down the road, but there are a couple of different ways that, that, you know, could be done for that, you know, particular assessment center to, to bring forth, you know, a group of finalists for, you know, potential appointment as the next police chief. So certainly can talk about that more later. As it relates to the, to the library director, I've had, Glenn, how many, what, two or three meetings with the chair and the vice chair of the Board of Library Trustees? For me, I thought it was important to bring the library trustees into the equation, even though the appointment's made by the town administrator to, again, get their input and, and feedback about, you know, where they see the library, what they're looking for in the next, you know, library director. And again, the skill set, qualities, leadership, all of that. They have a fairly, a fairly new board in terms of the amount of time some of the folks have been on there. So what I had asked them to do was to start working on the job description and modifying the job description and make sure that it fit the needs of the Bourne Public Library today and tomorrow. And also working as part of a screening committee. Now, what ended up in our second or third meeting is they're, they're new at this, and they wanted to take some time to make sure that we got it right. Which I totally understand and agree with. And so that process is probably several months down the road before it's really going to progress to the point that the advertisement would be issued and we would start collecting candidates. One of their concerns right now, there's probably four or five library directors around the state that are open. I didn't necessarily think of that as a bad thing in terms of the pool of candidates you might get, because some of them, you know, are in Western Mass. And, and so, you know, pools of candidates, people typically range within their, you know, commuting comfort. Folks don't relocate all that often, but they do, so. So they thought that taking a little bit more measured approach to put all that stuff together and, and work with the new administrator on, um, how that process will, uh, will finalize itself, you know, made sense to me. So, um, so that's kind of where we're at. They're working on that and getting input from the rest of the trustees. Um, so right now, Era, uh, Area Flynn, Finn is, uh, the Assistant Library Director. She's now, um, the interim library director. She's fully certified as a library director and has been a library director before. So that played into, um, their comfort level with the leadership in the library right now and, uh, as they sort of develop the process to, uh, to move forward. So libraries in good hands, they're doing well. People are really happy to be back in the library. Um, although we did have to close early today because the toilet's plugged up, but, um, that's, that's more of a building issue that, you know, needs to get put in the capital plan somewhere, uh, to try to address some of those building needs. But we talked about capital and, you know, I think this Board of Library Trustees is, um, you know, I think, at least from, from my perspective, would be a great, uh, group to work with and help them to identify, you know, sort of those, uh, building needs and things like that. And so I shared the capital plan with them, the due solution report, get them involved in, in how capital planning works. So when the new director is on board, you know, everybody's kind of working in, in sync. They were kind of left out in the, left out of the loop a lot, uh, previously. So I think this will be a good thing for the town and for our public library, which is a great, uh, you know, community resource. So. Any questions on those two? Uh, so the new positions, uh, if you remember from the, the town meeting in the, in, in May, um, Director of Information Technology and Management Information Systems, HR Director and Facilities Director. So we had been in conversations with the school district, uh, throughout the course of the development of all that, uh, through the budget process and, and everything else. And so I've had a number of meetings with, uh, Dr. Joe on this. And, um, about the only change is, uh, between the school committee and administration, um, because of their, what has become a really high reliance on information technology, they decided they really want a dedicated person. Um, and so they're going to, they're going to do that on, on their side. Um, and we'll have a, um, an IT director on the, on the town side in systems. And I think you'll find still some collaboration there because I think some of our stuff gets backed up over there. Um, the IT report from the study that the, um, the county did for us, uh, is being put the final ink to paper and finalizing that report, um, which will include, um, a lot of different things, but part of about where do we need to be going with IT in the future? And so as we go out and look, or the town goes out and looks for, uh, an information technology director, there'll be a great roadmap for, again, the, the skill sets. And really what we're seeing is somebody that's forward-thinking in the IT world. Um, particularly as it relates allow, around shifting to more cloud-based, uh, services for redundancy, recovery, disaster, you know, disaster recovery and, and, uh, and all of that, as well as making sure that we're staying up to speed with our security, uh, infrastructure and security systems to, uh, ensure that we at least put the, the best things we can in place to, to help insulate us from, you know, some of the attacks that I think we've all read about in the, in the news. So, so that's a, that's a forthcoming thing. Uh, human resources and facilities, um, we're working together on joint job description as well as an MOU, um, between the town and the school. Again, just to ensure that the, um, you know, sort of the, the rule set and how we would work with a shared, uh, department head, um, would work. And so I anticipate, um, I don't know if it'll be while I'm still here, but to be with the school committee to kind of go over, um, what that might look like as well as, you know, sort of those joint job descriptions for that. But the hiring of that and all of that is, you know, you're probably looking at, you know, sometime in August or September or even, you know, later to make sure that everybody's comfortable with, um, the plan and program and, um, what it is that we're actually going out and, and recruiting for. So those are all moving along and, you know, we'll see how far I can get the ball down the field, um, before, you know, early September comes and we'll, we'll hand that off. So more to follow on, on those, uh, three positions. Questions on any of those? All right. Uh, FY21 closes out, um, closing out the books. Um, we'll be meeting with the Finance Committee with the Board of Selectment on the 12th. Um, it's still up in the air whether we're going to need any, uh, budget transfers, but we want to be prepared, um, to be able to do that on the 12th. So we would request the board, um, be in joint session with the Finance Committee on Monday, uh, July 12th, um, primarily to talk about any potential budget, uh, transfers. So I'm not aware of any yet, um, and so we may not have any, but at least, uh, we'll be prepared for, for that. On the revenue side, um, you know, we got some good news at the end of, uh, end of June. We got our fourth quarter meals tax, uh, revenue came in at 145. Um, so we, uh, made our, our budget revenue number. We had 375 budgeted. We ended up about 449. So, um, that was a pleasant surprise. Hotel tax, we did very well in, so that, that was not an issue. I think going down the road, we still need to pressure the state to be able to break out, no kidding, hotel tax from like the Hampton Inn and, and, and the, the short-term rental tax that is collected to really figure out. And a lot of towns have actually hired a company to come in and actually do all that because it is a lot of work to try to ferret all that out. But I think it makes sense for us to be able to, to see the effect that the hotel tax, whether it's on the short-term rental side and, or whether it's on the, you know, the hotel motel side of, uh, of things. So, um, but we did, we did well. So things are, are looking good. We're feeling very confident in, uh, in our closeout and our performance for FY21. Um, we also, uh, successfully completed the CPE program with the Fire Department, the Certified Public Expenditure, uh, 96,000 and change. Um, that's been transferred to the ambulance fund and we'll be tracking that to go towards future purchase of, of ambulance. So this is revenue the town had never captured before. And again, was part of my challenge to the staff to always be looking at other sources of revenue other than the taxpayer and things that just show up on sources and uses, right? And go out after grants and things like CPE. So first time is always the hardest. Uh, you tend to get better at it. And so as we buy new equipment, potentially build a new station, all that money that's spent on that gets thrown into that program. And you get a, you get allocations for that. And so my expectation would be that we would actually see the amount of, of CPE reimbursement actually start to grow for a while as we, um, know we have some investments we're going to be making on the, on the fire side. So, um, again, that's revenue we had never captured before. And again, I think it's kudos to the Fire Department and the staff, um, over there for, for doing the, uh, the yeoman's work to, uh, to get that in. And I'm sure it'll be first of many years that we'll, um, be participating in that program and hopefully be around for, for a long time. If you recall, it's meant to capture that portion of Medicare that's not covered under their initial reimbursement, right? So we typically get around 70% uh, for ambulance calls. And so that CPE helps to capture that other 30% that you're not getting through insurance payments. And, um, and so the other thing that I would encourage, uh, the town to continue to do is we find these new recurring sources of revenue, whether it's CPE, whether it's if we are successful with this next grid project, is to identify where we plan on, you know, uh, investing those funds so that it doesn't just get sucked into the general fund and everybody looks around and says, where'd that money go? Right? And so we have ideas about, you know, certainly the ambulance fund, we've put out there for a long time that we want to put that towards purchase of new, new ambulances. And again, not let the ambulance fund be the place that, that the TA goes when he needs to put money into the budget, right? Which I just heard a horror story the other day about that. So, um, so we're, we're going to track that, make sure we know how much is there. Um, and so there's probably, after we take out this year's amount, I think 1.3 million or whatever the number was, um, there's about $350,000, you know, still in that fund and we'll continue to add to that. So, um, but I think that shows a commitment to the taxpayers that as we find these sources, we know and have thought about where are the strategic places we want to invest that, uh, you know, that money, um, for our future, for the town's future. So. Then lastly, the infamous splash pad drama continues. Uh, we, uh, we did get the part showed up today. So before everybody gets excited, we have to put it in and make sure it works. Uh, but we'll, we'll probably get that installed here this week. And if everything tests out right, we'll, should be able to turn the splash pad on. We'll hope the water flows. But, um, appreciate everybody's patience. Barriers like that can't be predicted. Um, and you just got to, you know, sort of deal with, with getting it back up, uh, up to speed. So. That's where we are on the splash pad.
We had a lot of rain over Fourth of July anyway.
That's right. Yeah, I didn't get any phone calls, but yeah. Memorial Day. But I did the week before and it was 90. So. Anyways, all right. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Correspondents?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I got six items that are minutes from the Upper Cape Tech District Committee meeting of, uh, May 13th. Also the Cape Light Compact, uh, Joint Powers Agreement regarding certain proposed amendments involving in-person meetings. Uh, Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod's, uh, response to RFP at Horn Avenue that while they can't act on this proposal, uh, they offer services that will help the trust meet its housing goals in Born. A presentation was also included in that document. Um, County Spill House, uh, with her resignation from the Recreation Committee, uh, effective, uh, June 22nd, we dealt with tonight. Um, Division of Marine Fisheries, uh, with shellfish area closures at the newly expanded area of Southeast shoreline of Little Buttermilk Bay, uh, from May 1 to, uh, it looks like July 31st. And the Secretary of the Interior regarding the pilot payments issued to the Town of Born that we should be expecting. Uh, three items that were included that were actually part of the, uh, June 15th. Um, correspondence was the, uh, State Lottery Commission with, uh, TJ's Kino license. Uh, the FEMA, FEMA reminding the town of flood plain management measures. And finally, uh, John Redmond's, uh, resigning from the Capitol Outlaw, Outlaw League Committee, which like I said, they were all mentioned during that last minute. And these items are all available for viewing on the town's website under the calendar date for today. That's it.
Anybody have anything on correspondences? Committee reports? We'll start down, MJ?
I, I don't think I've been serving on any committees, but I really, I, I, I hope you will report on the Clear Water Test, which I think is happening this week, right?
Yeah. Report, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Clear Water, the Clear Water Test.
It hasn't happened yet, but it is.
Yeah, that's going to be on the Board of Seward Commissioner agenda for Tuesday.
Okay. Then it happened because it's happening this week.
Yeah, yeah.
scheduled for Thursday. So let's just see what happens.
Oh, oh, the Clear Water Test.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I, I thought you said the Clear Water Trust.
No.
We have info on that next week though.
Good.
Definitely. George?
Uh, just, uh, a minor thing, uh, Joint Base Cape Cod, I just want to mention this. So I want to make sure they are considered as a ancillary stakeholder in the, uh, Bridges Project because they will be affected and it works both ways. But, uh, as far as, um, other use of, especially the Born Bridge. But, uh, anyway, I want to make sure that they are at least tuned into the meetings. And I'm not sure if they were well-represented the other night, but, uh, I think I would like to make sure that they are. Thank you.
If I could, yeah, I can say, you don't hear too much from the public. But I could tell you when I was at the commission, I actually went there and made a couple of presentations for them. So I think we do a little bit more behind closed doors. So yeah, I haven't seen them represented at all publicly actually.
I know. I, I don't know if they just have their priorities, but, uh, Peter, you've mentioned before about, uh, possibly having a meeting. They say that that is doable, you know, excuse me, a meeting hosted at Joint Base, which would be kind of unique for us. But, uh, uh, logistically, they would have to look at, you know, we certainly wouldn't want a meeting that would attract a lot of people because that would be a administrative nightmare for them. But, uh, that's enough for me. Thank you.
Uh, Judy?
Um, well, we talked about the bridges at the Cape Cod Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, meeting. And, um, you know, also reviewed the different types of projects that are coming up. I don't have them right in front of me. Um, but you know, they, uh, they always have the, the planning for the next five years. And, um, we review those and discuss them. But a lot of what we talked about was the, um, was, was the presentation about the bridges. And, and that organization is really helpful because, um, it is representation from throughout the Cape and different modes of transportation. So, um, it is really very key. Um, and there is representation. You know, the, now Mast dot has somebody who's involved with, uh, um, with the bridge planning project, um, program. That's it. It was a program. Um, then, so it's important that they're there and they are now.
We haven't had a meeting. We haven't had any since COVID started. So.
Let's just make one more comment. Um, yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think I want to make a, a shout out to the, I didn't, it wasn't on this agenda, but the opening of the Gardner Bridge. I guess it's, uh, pretty much opening, but, uh,
I got my name on it.
Our administration, uh, i- i- at Town Hall had to deal with something that what other place on the face of the earth had to deal with a, uh, a, you know, a bridge that preceded the founding of the town? And, and it's just a, it was certainly helped from, uh, you know, Representative Viera, at least he got the, the funding. But I think that caused another, uh, set of issues, you know? How do you, uh, deal with Davis Bacon? You know, the, these are things that were, were just, it just, the deeper you dug, the more you found. And dealing with, you know, touching a railroad is always an extra dimension. But, uh, my hat's off to, you know, seeing this through.
And the, um, five self-station, self-side fire station committee hasn't met in a while, but we will be meeting soon. Um, you know, we met in, in executive session at one time to go over, uh, um, possible locations. So that it will probably in the up, in the upcoming meeting like that, we will be, uh, following up on that and doing an hour. Tony has an RFP ready to go out in the street with that soon. Um, Police Building Committee, we still, we sent out a seven-day letter, uh, for the architect because of the, uh, the issue with the, the floor in the dispatch center, uh, that's failing. Um, and the process of trying, you know, the, the, figuring out how, how to fix it. I mean, there's, you know, it's a point that we will be looking at coring holes in there and checking about the moisture. And then if the ceiling that holds the wood, you know, the tile down in there. I mean, so then there's some other issues that are on the punch rack. The stairwells, there's some windows, uh, sealment issues. So, I mean, it's open, it's, it's open and, you know, uh, for, uh, everybody now. But we still have issues that are still ongoing. And the wastewater building committee, uh, the Clear Water Test will be done, which is a huge milestone, will be this Thursday. And so based on that, you know, in a successful Clear Water Test, you'll be, you'll, you'll start to see the process of firing up that plant. You know, and I think it's going to be 50% occupancy the first year and then a hundred percent, you know, you know, within a year after that, if I remember right. But, um, you know, uh, it's, it's amazing, you know? That committee did a lot of work and, you know, and the chair, the former chair who's sitting to my right, you know, uh, really put a lot of heart and soul into it for her time and, uh, as well as other committee members. So, you know, I think it's a project that we all can be proud of, you know, that, that little package plant. So. With that, I think we've been here long enough.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.